Almost lost track of time. It's 5:31. It's not too bad. Um, we're gonna start with our Pledge of Allegiance. Please remain standing for a moment of silence for Senate President Ruggiero. Thank you. Okay, thank you. All right, before we go into our executive session, I just want to make a quick announcement for everybody listening online and preparing for tonight's meeting. Um, all right, this is not an emergency meeting. This special meeting was scheduled during one of our March meetings in order to have a council workshop to discuss updating our somewhat outdated Chapter Five business licenses. We were elected to get work done and needed the time to do so outside of our regularly scheduled meetings. The executive session item was shortly after added because this was at the convenience of the litigators and the mediator. We wanted to accommodate their time. Uh, Item 1E, the request for use of town property by political group was added due to time sensitivity because we don't have another meeting before their event. That said, when the town comes, we will allow public comment on Item 1E when we get there as this is the only opportunity for the public to talk about that item. The council has set a precedent of not allowing public comment during work sessions. Accordingly, there will be no public comment on Item E2, B, and A. Sorry, I said it out of order. There will be a dedicated public hearing for those in the future. So that's my reasoning for it. If Council decides to take action tonight, um, we'll have a public meeting shortly thereafter. But, um, tonight is just someone wanting to present their ideas. It's the beginning of a thought and it's important that elected officials have the opportunity to discuss them. We all value public opinion and there's time for public comment as this process moves forward. So tonight, there will be no binding decisions made on our ordinances or the changes. Tonight, we will discuss what we'd like to see amended. We'll then go to staff for drafting or review those drafts in a future open meeting. And if and when Council decides we enact amendments, there will be a properly advertised public hearing. Um, that's what I want to say for our procedure for tonight's meeting. And with that, we'll go into a motion to enter executive session.
Motion to enter executive session pursuant to RIGL 42-46-5 pending litigation and 4246, uh, -5 collective bargaining local IBPO 425.
Second.
All right, so we got our motion, our second. Um, one more thing for people waiting downstairs or online. We put this here, um, at the beginning of the meeting to accommodate the time of town staff and, uh, the attorneys that we pay for. But we, we don't know how long we're gonna be up there. We encourage you to wait if you want, um, but I just wanted to set that expectation that we don't know we're gonna be back. Um, because sometimes we do know. Anyway, we'll go to our roll call vote. Counselor Dinsmore?
Yes.
Madden?
Yes.
Tom Maschino?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Ed Goldcox?
Yes.
All right, we'll be upstairs. I thought of that so hard.
No, you didn't.
Oh. Okay, um.
We're good. All right, so we're going to reconvene from executive session. Can I please have a motion to?
Oh, move to move.
All right, motion to executive session. Do I get second?
Second.
Thank you. Roll call vote, Councilor Dinsmore.
Yes.
Madnick.
Yes.
Palmigano.
Yes.
Reynolds.
Yes.
And Wilcox, yes. Can I please have a motion to seal the executive session minutes?
So moved. Second.
All right, so our motion are second. We'll go for our vote. Councilor Dinsmore.
Yes.
Madnick.
Yes.
Palmigano.
Yes.
Reynolds.
Yes.
And Wilcox, yes. There were two votes taken in executive session. There was a motion made by Councilor Madnick, right? First one. Okay, sorry, I did not write that part down. To agree with the proposed mediator settlement agreement to authorize Attorney Maruzak to proceed and present to the court all necessary documents. It was seconded by Vice President Reynolds and it passed unanimously. The other motion was a motion made by Councilor Reynolds to approve the tentative contract that has been reached by the IPVO. I did not write down the number. 425, thank you. That was seconded by Councilor Palmigano and it also passed unanimously. So we're going to go on to new business E1, discussion, consideration of. Oh, no, we did seal the minutes. Yes, thank you for that reminder, though. Reminder, do you use microphones? Oh, sorry, audience is talking. We'll mute our microphones online and even like paper ruffling will. They're made to cut out paper ruffling, but clapping and talking in the audience does the same kind of effect. So on to E1, discussion and consideration of request of Christopher Kona on behalf of South County Resistance told a peaceful rally May 4th. Can we move a motion to move this forward?
I moved.
I moved to what? What are you doing?
A motion to, to approve the request by Christopher Kona on behalf of South County Resistance. Chair of West Street Chapter told a peaceful rally on May 4th at Richmond Town Hall and for Richmond Townhouse Road pursuant to 12.04.010 of Richmond Code warnings.
Second.
All right, so we got a motion and a second. We do have council. Someone wants to say something, but do we have any counselor input on this? I don't hear any. Sure, you can go ahead, Alex. You don't have to say your name for the record every time.
Alex McKendall from Richmond. After learning about this, I just want to say I support the right of free speech. That's not what I'm here to discuss. I just want to make sure it's done right. Looking at the laws of Richmond, anyone who promotes a public event which has been promoted online and they're supposed to obtain a license, I think that that has been sideskirted. There's a fee of $50. There's supposed to be at least 10 days notice before the date of the public hearing and there's supposed to be a notice. Excuse me. A notice to all the property within 200 feet. So the South County Resistance, whom Mr. Kona is representing, is an organization that has been advertising this event since at least four to five days ago, so it seems that this has already had a green light, so I would. I'm concerned considering he is the Richmond Democrat Chair. considering he is the Richmond Democrat Chair. It's not absurd to ask if there are any members of council who are on this resistance. There's also an administration fee of $200. The code of ordinances. They have to provide police in off-street parking. They should also provide portable toilets. All trash and rubbish must be removed. These are the requirements for an ODL. So that's just some of my concerns. So like, I'd ask the town solicitor, who would be responsible if something happens during this event? Was there a registration form? You know, it says any person who promotes a public event or show including entertainment must obtain an entertainment license to protect the health and safety of the public. That's my concern.
What ordinance are you looking at?
This is right off the website.
People go for three minutes, so I just want to say that in advance. I didn't say that. But I know I usually do when you're here. In my opinion, this is an outdoor entertainment, but I do appreciate that feedback.
Okay.
Thank you. This agenda item is only for the protests. Alright, go ahead.
I just want, I'm Luca Berry. Richmond resident for like six years. Just wanted to say, we have the freedom to gather all here today without a permit. Why can't the South County Resistance gather without permit? Now an outdoor event with live music and food trucks. Or I didn't look at the flyer, I don't assume it is, but I've followed South County Resistance. I, you know, doesn't matter politically. They have the right to gather, First Amendment. That's why we are here as well.
Thank you. Do you have something you want to say as well, Chris?
Uh, thank you, Presidents Wilcox and Councilmembers. I know you have a busy agenda tonight. I'm grateful that you're able to squeeze us in. As mentioned, I'd like to request permission to use the town hall for the South County Resistance Chair at Westerly to conduct a peaceful rally on May 4th. I will say, while I am the Chair of the Richmond Democrat Town Committee, this is not a Richmond Democrat town committee event. We do this in the auspices of some of the work they're doing with the South County Resistance Chair at Westerly. We've been helping with the planning. We focus on sidewalks in the past. We're grateful for the flexibility of the police having that. However, I would prefer to have a safer option than trying to pile up on the sidewalks. And so bar in the town hall gets us an opportunity to be able to protest with some more space and to make it easier for the police. We have been working with the town staff and Chief Johnson. And because of part of the discussions, as Alex mentioned, there is some ordinance with that. In particular, they brought up 12.04.010, which is no highways or public land shall be used for assemblage or public or private gatherings without permission first being granted by the town. And so under that ordinance, that's coming here to request that. I do want to acknowledge that I think it's important, obviously, to recognize our freedom of assembly. But that, we also acknowledge that whether, which way you vote on this, it no way endorses any of the stands that the South County Resistance has or any of those, but simply that you do support our right to voice our exercise protest. So from that, request permission to conduct a peaceful rally from May 4th.
Awesome, thank you. I saw you. Go ahead.
Deal with insurance. Something gets hurt, hurts an ankle. Who has to cover that? They sit down on their own person?
That may be a question for our solicitor. Solicitor Zangari, are you prepared to answer that?
Yeah, if you'd like. If someone gets hurt on town property, it's a question of liability and whether or not the town's liable for that person's injuries. In other words, was there a defect in the property that was such that you knew about that you should have corrected? Right now, town property is open. It's the same as it would be now. Someone were to walk outside, trip, hurt themselves, the same liability would apply. So your liability doesn't change. You're just having more people gather at a time when the town hall is closed. But your liability standpoint, no, it doesn't increase and it doesn't decrease either.
We're covered if anything happens.
It's not that you're covered. It's that you have, your liability policy is in place. So yes, you have coverage. Whether or not you're going to be sued or not, I can't answer that. But you don't have any increased liability, but you don't have any decreased either.
Thank you.
You have something add about the protest?
Yeah, I have a question.
About the protest?
Yep.
Sure. A three-minute timer here. Go ahead.
Is anybody in this council right now a member of South County Resistance?
Usually, we have people share their piece. When they're done with their three minutes, they sit down.
That's gonna, to find out if any of you have an affiliation with the board that you're granting permission.
I'm letting you know our procedure. We always do that. If you'd like to have a seat when you're done with your statement, we will answer your question. But have your three minutes and then we'll answer your question when you're seated. Oh, I'm sorry, we do need your name for the record. Last name, too. Thank you.
So, one, I just asked the promoter, I guess, why does that have to be on town hall property?
All
Sorry. Can you find out why it has to be on town property and not another property? And then also, what is South County Resistance, so I can decide by, like, what are we resisting? So I can be aware of what I'm gonna say.
Sure, you can have a seat and then we'll answer the questions. And then we'll go on to the next speaker. Question, I'm not a member of the South County Resistance, no affiliation with it. They have info sessions and you can learn more about them on their website. I really don't know much about them. I know a little bit, but I don't want to misspeak because they're still fairly new. Any other council discussion?
I am not a member.
I asked if supported ever financially.
Point of order. We need to be recognized before you speak. We have a large crowd tonight and that's how it's gonna go. We usually give people one opportunity to speak on an agenda item. These rules are not changing this evening. Go ahead, Counselor Dinsmore.
Yes, I'm not affiliated anyway.
Awesome. So any further council discussion?
I would just say that I don't see this as a outdoor entertainment issue. I think they've applied under the appropriate section of the ordinances for a public assembly, so I don't think any of the other criteria that Alex mentioned apply. I think it's appropriately considered by the council as a public assembly.
Awesome, thank you. So we're gonna go for our roll call vote. Counselor Dinsmore?
Yes.
Madnick?
Yes.
Palmigano?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
And Wilcox, yes. Awesome. So, on to the next item on our agenda, which is the Chapter 5 Business Review. So we received a document that has information from our town staff, being Aaron and Josh Jordan. And we're gonna go through it line by line because there's a lot to discuss here, which was the main purpose of this meeting this evening. So council, we're gonna go with Chapter 5.04, General Provisions. Something going on behind me? You made me think it was. Sure, go ahead, Joe.
Aaron, were you gonna put that up on screen? Thank you, because it's not linking. Thank you.
Awesome. While everyone's getting their information out, just a little background, part of the reason we started this process was because some of our ordinances haven't been updated or looked at since 2011, 2009, 2014. So we started this idea to go through a review and see what we can do to make things streamlined and better for the town. So anybody have any comments they want to open up with Chapter 5.4? We're gonna start with that, any item.
Oh, well, Erin had a question on the first section. Is this current law or should this be updated? Were you talking about the fine, Aaron, $500? That's alright, yeah, take your time. Yeah, that's fine.
Attorney Zangari, did you review it before the meeting? Do you know if that's state law or is that something we have to?
I did not, I did not look at that.
So if I may give a little background.
Yeah. Yeah.
So, part of the review, it was asked of this council to take a look internally on Title V. I went through each section of the licensing portion where I have made some notes. I'm not here tonight to suggest any policy. And then through this process, should any amendments arise, then there would be a full legal review that would be done proposed, and then proposed for council for a first reading and then a public hearing. So we didn't want to spend in all disrespect, a lot of attorney time reviewing and providing the comparison against state law until we understood that there was an appetite to change some of those things. So some of the legal references that you know in there may be dealt with at a later time. And that was done just so that we had some sort of working document moving forward. So should provisions be made on some of this, the full legal review will happen with draft changes before you receive draft actual changes for a first reading and then advertised for public hearing. So some of these legal notes are something that unless Chris can freely answer, there wasn't a full review on that.
I mean, it looks like it's, you know, treated as a misdemeanor and that's those are within those guidelines, so I mean, it's
Yeah, it's actually less than the misdemeanor. One year, up to one year imprisonment and $1,000. So you're actually under the limit.
Alright. Anybody else have any questions on the first page here? I know we had a conditions for issuance of licenses and permits.
Yeah, what's the comment there?
It says, expand, have owner's permission.
Yeah, so some of our applicants that come through for licensing aren't necessarily business owners, but they are, you know, they lease the property. They, they're rentals of that. And so we thought it was really important to add that the renter or the leasing was in a full understanding of what property or what business activity was going to happen on property. So we were just going to add similar to what we do on our zoning applications, when we have an applicant that's proposing a use that they don't own, is some sort of sign-off for proof that, in fact, that the owner of the property is aware of the intended use.
Makes sense to me.
Have we had issues? I'm just thinking of a scenario where you rent from, you know, some big company in Massachusetts and they blow you off as far as getting the certification. So I don't know if there have been issues where this has come up and it's impacted the business or the town is somehow
Just as a reminder, sorry, sorry to interrupt you, Counselor Reynolds. Just as a reminder, audience, we need you to be quiet or else the microphones will not pick this up and we want to be accessible to everybody. Thank you. Go ahead.
So more of this general provision on this is not for our large owners, which certainly it could be. But we do allow some home occupation businesses in town. And so it might be a home office. It might be now cottage kitchen license. And so if the owner who's renting that property may say, ooh, I don't know that we're legally have that insurance to do so. And then you come here and say you allowed to have a cottage kitchen on a property that that person who's trying to run the business doesn't own. So I think it was just a coverage piece on that, but not necessarily something that's had problems specifically currently in Richmond.
So do you foresee it as the applicant will certify as part of the application that they've consulted with their with their landlord and they're aware of the intended use?
Yes, some sort of just general language even on the application. It could be on the referral sheet. I don't know if you're familiar, just with some simple sign-off.
So you're not looking for some written documentation from, okay, alright, that was my concern, that getting that might be a burden for the business and, you know, quite frankly, it's between them and their landlord. If they're not, if they're doing something they shouldn't be doing, that's their problem, not not the town's problem. You know, if they haven't gone through that process of making sure they can use the property a certain way, then they go get a license to do it. And then they can't do it because of landlords, that's that's their problem. But I think adding it to the application that the license, the applicant certifies that they've they have the ability to do this under their lease agreement and that's fine.
Yeah. Awesome, that's a good point. Anybody else have anything they want to add? Just go right down to the next comment. Is that how we want to do this? It seems like what we're doing so far. Next, please. Does this replace the requirement to see tax sale permits? Or license? For the affidavit of compliance. Do you want to share a little bit more on that one?
So we have a blank, pretty big affidavit of compliance statement that basically says that all business owners are complying with all state, federal, local laws. And so some of that is under our applications. We don't have that affidavit of compliance. And then some sections in that general business license, I'm gonna call it, that don't fall under our large items such as a liquor license or such as outdoor entertainment or such as a food license. That's not under regulated. A lot of the applicants that come in on some of these are simply looking for a business checking account and they don't necessarily check off a criteria for any other item. And so state law says that anybody who is selling stuff, whether it is a taxable item or not, has to have a retail sales tax certificate. That doesn't make any sense to me, but it's required in state law and they don't charge for it anymore. So if we provide this affidavit of compliance or attest to that, would that eliminate that provision? That's one of the items that sometimes applicants that come in on those items don't necessarily have that because they don't know that they need that from the state law. So I don't know if in legal review we can address it one way or the other. Putting one criteria.
You could require both. You could require just the affidavit or the affidavit and the backup permits if you wish. But maybe to Counselor Reynolds' point, you know, is that a burden? Both.
Yeah, I mean, I think if it's, you know, there are some, you know, in other words, if you're serving food, you want to make sure that they have an appropriate health department certificate that you've seen it. Sales tax permit, you know, doesn't go to public health and safety, so, you know, a check off on that. So I think you know, it depends what it is. I mean, if you're licensing, I guess, you know, I guess restaurants, the best, you know, example I can come up with, but something that's regulated that requires an actual, you know, a license. I see the sales tax permit is different than a license. That's just a so I would support, you know, if you want to put the affidavit in, I think that's fine, but I would think but those types of specific licenses, you should be, see a copy that's current because, you know, you want to make sure that they're in compliance. Because some of it does relate to public health and safety, so I think we should.
So my apologies. So the affidavit of compliance is in the section of 306 that in our fees that requires it. And so it doesn't mention sales tax permit, but the other things that are regulated such as the food license that it requires it specifically under that, a fituling, a food business, kitchen safety and that kind of thing. So if the affidavit of compliance, which isn't, it's really mentioned very briefly in this section, but it I think all continuing conditions of this license and permit, it does says compliance with all town, state and federal statutes. But when we work with businesses that are coming in on a general business and that's not on the checklist, they don't automatically provide it. Not that I think we need it because we do have the affidavit, but just trying to streamline the process for business owners so that we can add it to the checklist.
That, I mean, that makes sense. If it's called for in the specific license, that's covered there. So I think, right, for this general provision, just the affidavit is enough. Because there'll be specific requirements for specific licenses that might require the the permit. So, yeah, I think for this general section, I don't think you need to acquire the documentation. But that's just my thought on it.
I kind of agree with you, actually. So, anybody else have thoughts on that? Alright, silence is compliance. We all agree. All right, um silence is compliance. We all agree.
So there'd be no change there, right? Right.
Um, all right. So on to the next comment. This language should include business registration and or general business if business registration is amended.
So um a zoning. Uh business determination is done by the zoning officer and that is done on every new license. Um, transfer of existing license and or new business location. To determine if that could be a use of that. It might make sense more when we talk later about business registration, business registration, there is. Um, a lot of businesses that come in, they don't fit those other criterias we talked about, whether a liquor license, a holiday license. And they really have no formal review, but what they need from the town is. A um certificate of business registration so they can go and get. Even a state license where they can go and get a business checking account. And so a lot of the administrative issuance of business registrations. Isn't, they're thinking it's a license, it's a business registration and. Business registrations aren't reviewed. Aren't reviewed for a zoning use determination. With the expectation that it's a registration, they're reviewed whether it's a permitted use for the business in that area. So if we're going to continue with a business regulation, registration. Or we're going to change it to a general business, I just think that that. Use. For general business should be added in because we're saying every application of a new license. Business registration is not necessarily a license.
Right. So you want to just add that type of filing to the list to to this in addition to licenses reference. A business registration.
If we keep business registration as is now.
Right. Like you said, the state's taking that over or what?
State is taking over trade name. So registering the name. And so a lot of people come in. Who will need both currently with the town, they need to file a business registration because that's pursuant to the ordinance. As well as they need to file a trade name certificate registering its business if they are a DBA. And not a corporation. Now the state like gives um business name registration to corporations and LLCs. So as of August, it appears that Richmond's records on DBAs, which is a separate provision. Will will go away. Um, but that is only to register their name and it's not a license. So. Though, which is good for Richmond because those two things have been separated.
Right, but we would still continue with. The general business registration, just not the trade trade names.
State would be doing all of that.
Right. No, I think it makes, I think it makes sense to continue to do that and to add. That classification of. Filing to this section to require a review just to make sure that they're. The use is. In the in the proper area. Or the use is proper for the area.
Sounds like we're in agreement on that too because I don't like hearing any uh objections. On the next couple items in this chapter, Aaron didn't have any comments, but did counsel have any comments as they were going through it? Nope. All right, on to business registration five point oh six. Awesome. Um, Aaron, do you want to kick us off with your first comment here?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so. This review again was done on my part as not as policy, but more as far as administration and difficulty and vagueness in some of our regulations. Business registration as it stands now is probably the most difficult. To administer. There is, it's simply a registration, but it's separate under the law for registering the name. So a lot of towns have a business registration and then they tie in the name. That's not what Richmond does. We have it as a separate. Entity. Our office reviews those. It are sent to to Josh for his own use determination. There's no expiration date. We issue a certificate on that. Um, and then. There is no fee collected on behalf of the town. And. There is. Capable that goes into that. And so for the residents that aren't business owners. One of my suggestions is to recoup that because that's probably the largest thing, the issue is. A very minimal fee just to cover the cost of issuing it. Um, because it is a service to that person, but not necessarily everybody. Um, there's no expert expiration date whatsoever. So to try and identify businesses to come up with some kind of global map for economic development. Once they file this registration, if they don't fit on any other criteria, they never file again. So it's not current information. There is also, it states that their registration is not substitute for a business license or assume business name. Now they assume business name is the state, the trade name. But substitute for a business license. We have a municipal license. In a different section, but again, goes under the same press premise of business registration, a fee's not collected and there's really no criteria, just you're registering it. And if you don't have a restaurant, you don't have a tavern, you don't, aren't open for a holiday. You simply come in and receive this. So farmers are not open on holidays or any. You know. Service industry folks, free service, any kind of people that are trying to utilize. Home occupation. There there's no. Further review on this and not necessarily needs to, but I think they're assuming they're getting a license from the town of Richmond. And they're not really getting a license, they're getting a registration. So some of that has been confusing. In. In businesses that don't get any other license. Such as the holiday. Um, and then, you know, there's really not much criteria in there. So if it's going to stay. Currently as a business registration. I think a lot of people see it more as a general business license. That maybe some of that language should be updated from a license to a registration. And so, you know, what that looks like, I don't know, but. It is something that is questioned all the time in the office for some of the smaller businesses. That leave and they go, oh, no, I'm going to register and then I leave. Uh, this is my license. And I said, no, this is your registration. Well, what what can I do with this? You can go to the bank and open a check. But it doesn't really permit anything further on the state level should you need anything. So it's. I don't know if it's outdated. There's a lot of towns that have a general business license. They have provisions for those that don't fit in any other criteria. I think the definition should be cleaned up, if anything, if it doesn't change from a registration to a general business.
So you're not recommending that remove this. This, to me, when I read through this, it didn't seem like it was pertinent. There was no reason to have this provision anymore.
No, I I I don't think that that would be a good idea to remove it. I think it should just be better defined for what people are using it for. And I also think that if it is a general business, it should meet the minimum criteria. Um, that we do for. For the businesses, you know, it says it in. The compliance section that taxes are paid, it says all of that, but it doesn't say that in business registration. So providing a checklist for business owners that are small businesses, home occupation. We can't really provide a great checklist because there's not a lot of criteria under that. There's also not. Zoning use determination included in that. So but the interpretation is that they're getting a general business license, which I. I don't think that was the intent of this regulation.
Are there other questions out because I have another question?
I have one.
All right, go ahead.
A further question. So we talked about home use businesses. Something that I know Gary Parker, I don't know if he's still here, we've talked about that quite a bit. I obviously there's going to be a difference between like a brick and mortar store or a restaurant that's a business. And someone who's got a business at their house. Do we really need a zoning determination for every business at someone's home? I mean, I guess there's. There's a sliding scale on what that could be, right? If someone, um, for instance, someone has a uh.
Graphic design.
Graphic design versus like a paddock with horses and horseback riding license. Like what is the difference in that for business registration versus licensing? Like where? Where is that difference? And how would we? Uh, how would we create a policy to differentiate? Between that because. We don't want to put policy in place that's going to prohibit people from being able to have at home businesses. In fact. This council and EDC is trying to work on expanding them.
Yes, so that's why I wouldn't propose eliminating it. I would propose more further defining it as consideration of a general business. Because this would be the minimum standards. And state law and our regulations further address additional criteria. But say a home business, okay, so say someone wants to open up a. I don't know, physical therapy or somebody has a home office. What that, what each business does draws different. Things. It may have noise, it may have additional parking, it may. Be something that's not permitted as a use in a residential area. And so. That review for zoning use determination says, yes, we allow some accessory uses in the code for home occupation. But it's limited to this, it's limited to, there is no outside storage, there is not. Forty people showing up in a one acre zoning neighborhood to run a business. And so. There is, if there's a hard line set, but a general business registration. Isn't something that's over burdensome. Simply trying to determine if it's a permitted use for the area, if it's allowed by the code. Um, collecting a very small fee. And what West Greenwich does, which I think is a great idea, they waive that fee for if you hold any other license. So it's a twenty dollar annual fee. Should you hold a holiday license, should you hold a food license? Like or any other license you hold, they waive that fee. But at least. The town is looking at. The, again, the public safety, potential nuisance and just not regulating anything at all. And so it's a very fine line of saying, hey, home businesses, we want you. But we're not. But maybe it's not zoned for what that business is. So. A business registration doesn't necessarily do that. A general business license would.
You good? Answered your question?
I think it's clear. So just declare to summarize this. So you're uh you're suggesting that we change this to a general business license? Adapter, okay.
Yeah, that makes sense to me. I wanted to shift gears to the fee portion of it. Um, and the expiration and. I can see why you would want them to renew and to come back, you know, to keep the records up to date and to keep everything there. If that were to happen, I wouldn't want a fee every year for renewal. But I do want a fee for. The initial one, just to offset the cost, so the cost isn't on everybody else. Um, and I also think the renewal. It's just, yeah, like you wrote here, to keep current information current, you know, because we have the. Information we're looking for to contact them if needed. You know, if we want to do. Um, I got the two fiftieth commission stuff coming up and we want to reach out to local businesses to get them involved. And that would be a great resource for all of our commissions who do similar events. Um, so having them renew every year would be great. All I got on that. You have one more?
Just a thought on that. I mean, we could do something as easy as an email from the town. You know, every year saying it's time to update your information with us or tell us nothing's changed, you know. Or, you know, tell them this is what we have on file, is are there any changes? Um, and at least, you know, they may respond, they may not, but at least you're trying to get. Updated updated information and make it easy to easy to. Comply, you don't have to come down, you don't have to, you know, to fill out a paperwork. It's just a simple. Reply to my email that, you know, because you really. Again, you're just verifying. Location that you're still operating, address, all all of those things. It's nothing. Nothing else really, right?
Right. And just. Picking back on that though, if there's going to be a database created to manage some of that. It is a simple blast email, that's fine. If you're not issuing certificates, that's more of a lot of the fee, the paper, the printing, the seals. The cost to do that portion and the review to collect that fee. But if it's a simple. Renewal online, there, we created an in-house business tracker that was done in-house completely. But and we do have a business license software. But should that expand and print certificates, I think the renewal fee should be very nominal just to cover those costs. But if it's going to be a response to them. Registering. Via email, I don't know how that would work if that stands legally on. On ways because they're not testing to whatever a lot of the forms require. But then, no, I don't think there should be a fee, but then there should be an expectation they're going to get a business license every year.
Oh, I agree. I if you if you're getting it the first time, you've already verified the use. You you've done all your, checked all the boxes. And, you know, each year you just want to update your records. Are you still operating? Um, you know, may or have you changed locations? Maybe they've changed locations. So. I I don't see the need to reissue. A license. It's a general business license every every year. Um, yeah. Anyone sees a problem with that?
Yeah. We're going to do public comment at the end if we do it. I think we are doing it. I think that's what we've decided. Um. But the end of council discussion, we'll have it. Any other counselor thoughts? All right, um, on to the next one, the five point two hawkers peddler is an outdoor salesman. This has been a. Oh, table game, sorry. I flipped too many back and front pages.
I have no changes to this.
No changes.
But I don't know if anybody else.
Go ahead, Mark.
It just seems ridiculous to me that we we charge a business to have a pool table. I mean, it's ridiculous. I mean, I I would, I would support, unless there's more than three, that. There's no, there's no license required, there's no. Now, again, I don't want to go against state law. If state law requires them to have a license. But we can certainly waive the fee. Um, for it. But I that's, I mean, it's a small thing, but I and I don't know how many. Actually comply in the first place. Yeah. But it's, you know, that's just my thought on it. You've got a pool table or a video game, you got to pay whatever the fee is. It's. Doesn't make any sense.
Yeah, any other counselor thoughts?
I agree.
Yeah, I had the same thought when I looked at it. I was like, really? Video games? Um, so maybe we can have. Our attorney, see if it complies with state laws. We go through this and see if that's something we can repeal. Um.
Or at least eliminate it. And if we can repeal, let's at least eliminate the fee. Um. If again, so we can, I'm sure we can do that.
All right. Now we're going on to the hawkers peddlers and door to door salesman, which um I've received a good amount of emails, not a lot um on them. So I figure this is something we should discuss either way. What are, what are we thinking on this?
So.
They also want to go first before, like, I don't know, I'm just making sure, just follow the rules. Go ahead, Mark.
The question I had, and this is more for for Chris as the solicitor. There's an element of speech here. It's commercial speech and it's, it can be more easily regulated by the the town. But I don't. And this is my question, could we eliminate it altogether? Um, without running a follow the first amendment? That's that's my concern. Um, and I know, you know, people's big complaint is this is is solar door to door, but there may be other. Door to door that. That is beneficial. So you you clearly can't pick and choose. You can't say no solar, but yes to this. You clearly can't do that. Um, so either you have to have it or you don't have it. All, all or nothing. And I, to in my mind, I I I think. Eliminating it would could is a problem. Um, you know, we could certainly. Uh, increase the fees to make it, you know, a little more onerous. Um, so not everyone's getting one. Um, but that that's my, that would be my concern with just eliminating door to door sales licenses all altogether.
Yeah. There is an exemption in here about. Um, selling farm produce, garden flowers, anything you make yourself. Um, art kind of stuff, but then also religious books, publications. selling farm produce, garden flowers, anything you make yourself, art kind of stuff, but then also religious books, publications, I'm kind of a Bible. So that kind of covers a little bit of the first amendment. As well, just, I don't know if that helps.
I know, no, but, no, commercial speech is protected by the first amendment. And so that's, and I don't know that you could, I mean, I don't, you know, that's why we'd have, if we were going to eliminate it, we'd have to research that and see whether that would be permissible. I don't support eliminating it.
Does their, does their freedom of speech end up at the door? That kind of thing, like? I, I get what you mean, don't worry.
That would include, you know, you have, like, Boy Scouts coming, things like that, so.
Yeah.
It, it could, I mean, I mean, yeah, and they, I mean, they're not applying for licenses either, but yeah, it's, 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 I, I just think it's I think we're better to keep it, and if we want to, again, you know, raise the fees, so we don't have a lot of people, and make sure that we have enforcement provisions in there, so if people are violating that. You know, I got an email recently claiming that someone came to someone's house claiming to be from a certain solar company, they don't, but they don't have a, they're not listed as someone who's got a license, so. Yeah, right, so that we have enforcement, so that, you know, that people have to follow the rules if they want to do it. So, but I think, I don't think we should eliminate it altogether.
Right, I do agree, and I think when it comes to enforcement, it's important that the public know that they need to call right away. You know, I, I love hearing from people and getting emails, but at that point, the person is gone, they've gone home for the day, they're enjoying their time with their family, and the police just don't have the time to catch them. And we did issue a license recently, and we got calls about somebody going door-to-door without one. Like, even with the license, you don't stop the bad people from doing bad things and doing something wrong. So, I think that's proven there, but I do agree with increasing the fee, because a lot of people I don't know, aren't liking it. And it's really low, and I don't think it's been amended in a long time, sir, go ahead, Jim.
Yeah, several of the comments I've received from constituents was around the identification of the person, so like you know, wearing a particular outfit or shirt that identifies them as a member of the company they're supporting, or the organization supporting. I think there's been an absence of that, and maybe that could be worked in as well.
It's a good idea. Yeah. Get more action?
No, I just say, I agree, because I know there's been people going around just wearing kind of like, you know, the road gear stuff. Reflectors, kind of getting into houses and things like that, so I think, yeah, especially, I know they wear a thing around their neck.
Yeah, and I mean, the person was from the same company, so maybe a little education on our part when we issue a license to the person, say, hey, nobody else from your company can use this.
Are you recommending that we limit door sales, let's say, you know, for instance, we talked about solar, but there are other things, you know, there are door salesmen for siding and windows and pest treatment? That we only limit to one license per company?
No.
Or not?
No, because the background checks need to happen. So like, when somebody applies for this license, they're going through a background check, and, and we're vetting them to make sure they don't have a criminal background before we let them go door-to-door. We issue it to a company, then I think it would be on the company to make sure their employees are safe, and every company has different policies on that. So I think if we're making them do the background check and it's per person, we're protecting our citizens a little better.
All right, and just to clarify, Helen's going to be issuing a picture ID, and we'll be charging a fee issue that picture ID, is that how I read this correctly in this discussion?
We have the capability to do that.
Yes, we could, so currently, they just get a license like anybody else, so they're not bringing that door-to-door. And so a lot of concerns is the identification. So could we do that in-house, we, we have a few things, we, we do it for the private detective license that we issue. There's a cost to that, the police department does chief still in here, it does assist our office with that, but there, there is an added cost to that, so could we develop something that certainly has our seal that they wear with a picture ID? Definitely, but again, there should be a cost to recruit that.
All right, absolutely, absolutely. And you had a question here about adding a BCI component. Is that not currently? At least the ordinance doesn't say it, even though we're probably doing it.
We're doing it. It says the police chief shall have a recommendation, however there is nothing in the language that requires a BCI specifically, and so as we review these ordinances and making it clearer for businesses to streamline exactly what's expected so that there's no surprises, and I say, oh, we need a BCI. Oh, so just having it in there to reference and coming up with clear minimal checklist that can be referenced, I think makes it a lot easier to do business enrichment. And so a lot of this review is that, is to make it clearer that it's in the ordinance, one, and then two, so we can separate it out in a checklist. But yes, BCI's are being done. We're doing it under the premise that the chief has the issuance, but I think both should remain.
Yeah, no, I, I agree, I think we should explicitly say in that section that that will, it will include a, a BCI check. But also give the, the chief the ability to perform such other investigation as they, as they deem necessary. As it's already, as it says already.
Awesome, any other comments on this item? We go down to the comment, it's still within the same section, I think, about mobile food establishments?
Well, a question about, there was another thing about the shorter licensing or on the next page. Aaron had a comment under the thirty-day.
Oh, right here, yeah. A specific provision.
Oh, you have the, I'm sorry.
That's all right, there was a specific, specific provision you wanted removed?
Yeah, so if you are getting a thirty-day hawkers, hawkers, peddlers, or door-to-door salesperson's license. They might, they must satisfy certain requirements of this chapter for my, for myself to issue that. And so I'm not sure why something over thirty days just requires my, just under thirty days requires my approval, and over thirty days is counsel. In my opinion, the council is the licensing authority, I think they should say the licensing authority, and then on the issuance. So I don't like being the person that's going to approve on the criteria and issue the license all at the same time. I just think anybody who is applying under any of these provisions should go in front of the council. And I don't think it's because we can't make a business on an agenda for an application, because some of these processes take longer. Not all of them, but some may take longer for them to get proof on the BCI, they have trouble sometimes getting the secondary identification. So I just don't feel comfortable being the issuance of that when it's less than thirty days, so. Because they can't get in front of council, it's typically be made twice.
So you're saying there is enough time to get in front of council?
Yes.
Okay, how many of those, do you get a lot?
No.
No?
We just got recently an inquiry about one. And they wanted to know basically why they have to pay the same fee for, I think that's later, the thirty-four.
Yeah, it's at the very end. Very last section. A fee for a thirty-day is twenty-five dollars, and for one year, it's also twenty-five dollars.
Okay, that makes sense to me, any of you, we also have anything you want?
So we're going to move sessions B and C. Essentially, and then we're going to modify the wording in A. Basically, any license.
Right.
All right. So yeah, I guess you asked comment, if handcrafted items already covered in another section, it's duplicative, yes, we don't need that. But now on to mobile food establishments? Want to share a little bit what you thought here?
Yes, so this initially, I believe, I wasn't here drafted, but was written because typically hawkers and peddlers had these licenses, they were the Dell's food truck, they were the ice cream truck. And now that there are state MFVs, which are mobile food establishments, we can't require them to have a peddler and hawker license if they have an MFE. We can address it in a different place, but we can't have them have a hawker and peddler. So looking at legality, just removing all of that, because it's not it's not really, it's not, one, it's not done, and two, we can't do it anyway, so it gets confusing when, like, Dell's comes in and they want, they're like, oh, no, I'm selling my product, but they're selling food, they have to have a state MFE now.
Isn't that what this says, though? He says no operator of a mobile food establishment is required to obtain a hawker or peddler license, provided that they've got and state regi, state license to be a mobile food establishment.
But they say, I don't have an MFE, so I want to.
Which they can't get.
So, so the state statute says in order to be a mobile, sell out of a vehicle, you have to have, you have to go, be registered by them.
For food only.
Yeah, okay. All right.
I, I think we should adopt a mobile food ordinance. Think that's in our, our best interest. It's something that Charlestown did, other towns have done, we've looked at those ordinances, they're fairly straightforward. And it allows us to hold more events in town. And even allow, like, Elena's food trucks, they're local, and there are a couple other food trucks. The one over that's at Jules Antiques, for whatever reason, they got shut down, I think that had something to do with the way that our policies are in, we don't want to have that. So I think if we were able to draft a policy for mobile food truck ordinances based off of policies from other towns that seem to be successful, that would be our best interest, and then we can wrap this into that policy.
Yes, that makes sense to me, I'm opening, I'm open to reviewing a a draft ordinance for mobile food trucks. I know I recently talked to the president of Charlestown, she says she's very happy with hers, so, or they are very happy with theirs. So.
So what, what, that would just regulate locations, I mean, because you can only, if the state is allowing these to exist, you can't regulate them differently, so what would, what would the ordinance cover that's not covered by the state registration?
That's a good question.
So we don't regulate them at all as part of location.
Right.
And so further down, I did take a look, because there was a lot of questions about that. So the state allows us, I believe, and Chris, let me know if I'm stepping into but the state allows us to decide where we allow food trucks, if we're going to have MFE events of food trucks, there's a certain regulation the town has for that. That's meaning large gatherings of that, and we can set an amount to charge, and the state limits that regulation of what that license would be, up to seventy-five dollars per year for that mobile food truck. So there's been a lot of, a few restaurants that have reached out to me directly, and so saying, hey, us brick and mortar, we got to get a visioning license, we got to go through the department. We have the state of Rhode Island's food business license. But they're not getting regulated, and they're setting up right across from our brick and mortar stores. So is, that might be something that the council wants to consider, in fairness, as the popularity of food trucks grow, because we don't regulate them at all.
Okay.
And so what that looks like in Richmond, I don't know, but a lot of there's been a lot, some feedback from brick and mortar stores that say, you can just basically pop up anywhere. And we don't regulate them at all, so we can't even give them a zoning use determination. The fire marshal can't inspect them to say, are they safe, are they safe, that's all at the state level. But should they hold that state MFE? The town can decide that we want to license them and will allow them in certain areas. And we will allow so many trucks, whether it grew in a certain area, some towns have that separate provision. It's already allowed in state law to have large gatherings, like, we do do that now. But should it not be in an area that might be conducive to food truck event as far as parking and safety and restroom facilities? Right now, there's nothing that regulates that.
Okay, all right, that makes sense, yeah, I think we should look at that. And obviously, if Charlestown has one, I'd be interested in looking at that.
Yeah.
I think I provided.
I think it was in here, I thought it was right behind it, but I think it's towards the end.
Yeah, that's why it's not here.
But there's a lot, there's a lot of them.
Yeah, DBR gave me a lot of great examples, Foster, when Sackett's in here. I think there's quite a few in here to have a look at, so, there are Gansett. And a lot of them define what is, what's available, what's prohibited. Liquor has been a popular subject about mobile food trucks, they are not allowed to serve under state law. Any type of liquor out of a mobile food truck. If it is a caterer that's utilizing that, a caterer can't utilize that for a public event, so that's a separate provision. But having some of these regulations on when and where, maybe not when, but where specifically you would allow it, and for how many. Should somebody have a large piece of land, and they want to just set up and put two hundred food trucks in an area? That necessarily something the town doesn't want to have a say for. For their neighbors, or. So there's a lot of different sections. A, a lot of different examples, and so should the council want to see something more filed, wrapped up, we certainly can take time, you know, do an example that's more similar to our.
I, I mean, I think that makes sense. You know, something, you know, I'm always, keep it simple. Stupid.
Why'd you look at it?
Method. But yeah, I, I agree, it's, it's, you know. Definitely need, you know, to eliminate the poss, you know, the, the examples that you gave that are, you know, maybe extreme, but could happen. So better to get out ahead of it, since, you know, it's not, it's just growing, it's not getting smaller, so. And I agree with the, the brick and mortar, you know, it, it is fairness, you know, it should be fair, even even playing field, so certainly a consideration.
Awesome, so we're going to look for more information, and kind of, I guess you guys would draft what you think would be beneficial to Richmond, then we can review it. I do just have a thought about, like, if somebody comes to town for one day just doing one, like, event, that is like a food truck event, because, sorry, there's no other word for it. We wouldn't require every individual truck within that event to get a license, because we're already issuing the outdoor entertainment license, I just want to make sure we're not, like, double dipping into literally, like, the same thing. Because it just seems a little, as the kids say.
So we can, there is a state law provision to handle that completely different. There is a gathering food truck that's already on the, on the books, and the council will have that authority to issue that for specific to food trucks. And later in the conversation, as we get into entertainment, looking at, does our outdoor entertainment? Is our outdoor entertainment event, is our outdoor entertainment, it says music concerts, other? Or do we want to look at maybe an event license, which a lot of towns have? They have a larger event, they have a one-day event, what it would look like with food trucks in that event, there is some examples on that, so. You can you can look at mobile food trucks in both ways, you could look at it under the MFE ordinance specifically, and that would talk about large gatherings of an MFE. Or you can look at it as part of an event license that we don't currently have, we have outdoor entertainment. Or would we extend outdoor entertainment to talk about some conditions on an MFE? We have to be careful with MFE because of the regulations at the state, because they can't be further held to any other different standards, so there's a few ways to look at that.
I prefer to have it all in one ordinance.
Yeah.
Someone says, yeah, I got a mobile food establishment, they only go on a one document, they don't have to go to outdoor entertainment license and mobile food establishment, if you put it in one place, good to go. Make it easy.
Simple, stupid.
Yeah.
But then you have to look at if somebody's doing outdoor entertainment, and they're not necessarily doing an establishment that outdoor entertainment was drafted for. Which I'm just projecting here, but I think outdoor entertainment was developed for businesses to allow to have concert theories outside and, and have extended, you know, liquor service. Well, is outdoor entertainment in the respect of different types of events that we have? And they want to have food trucks, but maybe they're not doing a concert at all, they're just gathering. So that would be specific to food trucks, or maybe they're doing some other entertainment. So, I mean, we really have to look at outdoor entertainment.
Which is further down, right? And I thought, I think you have comments there, I just want to lose our spot. So, we'll get to that more. So we'll go on to the flea market?
I have one more thing to discuss.
Yeah.
So item E, the time from nine AM or later than sunset or eight PM. I would prefer to have that changed to seven PM. Also, after eight PM, a lot of people putting their kids asleep at that time. Last thing you want is a door knocking at eight PM.
Oh, I'm sorry, back, door to doors?
Yes. Seven PM seems much more reasonable. It's a small change, I'm not sure there are many people that are going door to door at eight PM anyway. But at least if it's in the ordinance, it's clear. Yeah, because it's law.
Awesome.
Yeah, I think that.
Yeah. Alright, on to flea markets, chapter five point two four. You have no additional comments on this one?
Yeah, so this recently got a change when Second Pan Dealers Junkyards was revised. And so the town, maybe three years ago, did change this up a little bit and because state law changed, so.
Okay, I, I have a question. I was wondering if something like a farmer's market would fall under this? They're similar, but they're far, far enough away.
Farmer's markets are handled under, they're covered under Farm Bill. They're further defined as not flea market, which is basically second, selling wares and goods. Farmer's markets is, is surrounded by agriculture.
Right.
For accessory units and that it's not covered for that.
Awesome, thank you. Alright, now scroll on the next one, alcoholic beverage licenses. Any counselor wanna start off with this one?
Sure.
Go ahead, Dan.
I think the first thing that I came up with when I read through this is, I have no idea what the different types of liquor license classes are. Is that something that we should have here? I know it's in state law, but I mean, should everyone have to go through the RI general laws to figure out what the license are? I think we should define it in the ordinance, specifically what it means. I was reading through this, it was like, could not understand what the different license for, what they meant and why you would apply, you know, class A to app licenses to different businesses. There's really no definition here. I know you provided quite good information from other towns. Seems pretty detailed, except for lack of definition of what these licenses.
Yes, so our, this is our ordinance, literally for serving alcohol. And it references, you know, in business regulation from DVR, who sets a lot of the law and certainly statute. But when we refer to applications, we have no reference for any kind of criteria condition, which is built in the business regulation liquor license. And if you've ever looked at it, it's about four thousand pages changes and they don't even sometimes understand. So I, I agree, I think it's further, it should be defined to determine what each class is. A class A is a liquor store, that is a very popular item when people want to come to town. That is limited by census data and how much, how much population we have too. That's what we'll have until it changes or enabling legislation changes. A lot of question is, what is BV? BV is our, is our food business licenses that serve food. And what is a reasonable food to serve for a liquor license? That's a lot of questions we get. We also have a BV limited, so that is beer and wine, not hard liquor. We have C and D, which are like club licenses. Do we foresee having clubs licenses here? But they also in the, in the state law, limit what the food choice would be for a club, Providence. You know, they're not having a full kitchen for certain businesses that hold that license. So yeah, ours is very vague and it, and we use the state forms because of that. And some of the checklist that we require, we have to dig deep to say why that's a condition of renewal or issuance. And I think, again, to simplify for businesses, to have exactly what they expect, to be layman terms as possible, even if it's in law, but at least it allows us to create a checklist that's more of a line that needs to happen, because you know, Middletown is, is very large. It talks about cer- certain regulations and it defines some of those. Training certification, we require tip certification, that's required under the law. But there's no reference state or local ordinance for that. And so defining some of that, because then we actually say, oh, you refer to the business regulation and the policies and rules and procedures that sometimes change and are kind of vague. And then when you ask those agencies for specific questions, do they fit in that? And they say, ask your local solicitor. And it's their, it's their business regulation, but it's not defined on our end, so. And they won't make a comment on it, because there'd be appeal, they're the entity that's going to handle the appeal. So I think it'd be clearer for all if we somewhat expanded this. I mean, Middletown's is very, pretty specific and it does reference state law, but at least it further defines things. I think I do have an example that does define each of the classes. Another town, I don't have this in that, but yeah, I think for a minimum, that should serve.
That sounds good to me.
But you're not, I mean, again, I know you just put the whole thing in, in here. But you're not advocating establishing a separate beverage license commission to enforce that's all state liquor, okay?
But you're, you're, you're the licensing authority under the statute, but not all of these provisions that Middletown has.
Right.
I'm not on board with, but just showing how much more expansive it is.
Yep.
You know, and shall be made, you know, even the application shall be made to the town clerk on a form provided for that purpose. The license you'll be, shall be contained in our chapter, which that is defined. And they should pay the cost of advertising of the public hearing on the application. But renewals are handled differently now. So I think it would just, if we could define the difference criteria for a renewal, a new license, a transfer license, I think it'd just be administrated wise a lot easier.
Yep.
Awesome. So now we're going down to chapter four, uh, five point four four.
Just one more thing in alcohol. Class F license, which is the license under state law that allows the council to administer like one-day licenses and it was typically for nonprofit fundraisers. It was, it was very much limited to nonprofits and nonprofits only. Now any entity, but anyone who holds a liquor license can apply for that. And it's limited under the law for twelve, you can't get any more than twelve consecutive. But we don't really have further definition of what the liquor liability would be. We do have it under state law for the other classes, because they're cover that. But in the class F, we don't have that certificate of insurance or liquor liability component. We recently had that discussion and that was instituted because it was a, it was a town property. But should it have been another business, or not business, or say, you know, the range wanted to have a liquor? The council's issuing that license with really no insurance provision, certification. So Jamestown, it, it spells it out a little more. And I think at a minimum, we should kind of expand on that license.
So the other classes have insurance requirements under state law, but F does not?
Alright, we'll see that amendment as well, for those further defined, okay? And then we'll go on to entertainments. Alright. I'm glad it's in blue, so we can see that it was Josh Jordan. So do you know anything about Joshua's comment, like elaborate more, okay?
Yeah, so currently under, outdoor entertainment is probably the most questioned and administrative thing, that's, the way it's written is very difficult. We do receive a lot of complaints on outdoor entertainment. And they do require a zoning use determination to make sure it's a permitted use. Josh wanted to ensure that that, you know, stayed in there. But the license required and the wording in it is probably, that's the largest thing, is that the license should be required and nobody can conduct a music festival, concert or other outdoor public entertainment without first obtaining a license from the town council. What is other outdoor entertainment? Is golf outdoor entertainment, is horseback riding, is, you know, kayaking? Is really anything to be considered, and it's just so vague. It's completely vague. And so as I spoke earlier, a lot of this developed from businesses that wanted to have outdoor concerts to, you know, for their, you know, restaurants, basically. You know, we're talking about specific restaurants that have outdoor entertainment in town and it fits well. However, some others that come in and they want to do a, not a concert, but say they want to hold a water park in their front yard. Or if they want to, such as our seasonal recreation that had the outdoor light show. They got outdoor entertainment, but it's not really defined.
Yeah.
So there was a little bit of gray area in that. And such as, you know, the, what we talked, talked about with food trucks and gathering. If they don't have music, is that outdoor entertainment? So either if we're going to keep it as is and not do maybe an event license that may have more specific criteria, just simply defining what other outdoor entertainment is. And so Josh and I, we talked about a few things. Is, is do we look at the zoning ordinance that defines what outdoor entertainment slash recreation is? There's a lot of provisions in there, so it does include golf courses. I mean, we regulate golf courses that have restaurants, state legislation, you know, state law does regulate golf courses. Is that what we want to consider as other public entertainment? I'm not sure that that was the first. So just cleaning up some of the taintiness of that. There is, we had the outdoor adoption event that happened. And that really outdoor entertainment? No, but it's a public gathering at a large space with parking and, and might have had safety detail. So the more some of these inter- different types of events come up, I'm thinking that an event license might be more appropriate in keeping outdoor entertainment defined maybe separately for the restaurant establishments and, and the reason why they use. We have hi- private entities for people who have, you know, a small wedding or they're gonna have a party and they're, they go under a sound permit application, because it's not open to the public. But for public events, this current ordinance is, is really vague.
Go ahead, Mark.
I think you just alluded to it, but I just want to make sure, because this was my question as you were explaining, explaining it. Do you think it would be better to have a whole separate section dealing with events and public gatherings? As opposed to trying to incorporate that into, like expanding outdoor entertainment to include other things? You, you think it's better to have the events in a sep- its own independent section?
I think that makes sense to me. Anybody else got anything they want to?
I mean, the logic is the same, you've got a gathering, you know, in a space with a large number of people attending, you want to make sure there's adequate parking, you want to make sure there's adequate access for EMS if necessary. You want to make sure that's appropriate for the area. You want to make sure that the hours are appropriate. You know, all of those same considerations go into any large outdoor public event that, you know, go into, you know, a restaurant that wants to hold a concert.
Yeah, great, so I was, yeah, anybody else got anything they want to add?
Yes.
No? Sure, go ahead, Dan.
Yeah, you know, I looked through, through your comments regarding the zoning use table. I'm not sure we're gonna get much out of it. I mean, the zoning use table's very broad, it'd be very difficult to parse that down and I think if you tried to, it'd be very complicated. And I don't think we want to limit either outdoor entertainment licenses or an event license to specific use codes. Because you'll run into a situation where something won't fit and then you won't know what to do. And we're gonna end up having to come back here and go through public hearing and revise the ordinance for something as simple as a business, I, sorry, event license that could be approved in like thirty minutes.
I have a question, I scrolled away from it. It was the comment you made about a complaint you get a lot. Yeah, okay, it was under the hours. What kind of complaint do you get about hours? Is it like in?
Yeah, so the largest complaint we probably receive through my office and this is just, you know, people that come in and paying their taxes and they have a complaint or they call in, because there's, you know, a certain, some businesses, and we've had a few over the years of outdoor entertainment. And they have live entertainment outside Friday, Saturday and Sunday night, all weekend long. And so some of the residential areas that live within those establishments are saying, it'd be really great, support them having it, but do they have to have it every single night? Every weekend, all summer long? And so I said, well, it's, you know, the provision, but there's, there's really no limitation on the amount, except for term of how the license is issued and that the time wise of it. You know, it should, it can't be begin any more than eight AM and it can't be any later than eleven PM. And so that is the largest probably.
Yeah, yeah, I remember during my first term, we issued a license, I, I think it was a business that's out of business now. And I had thought like when they fill out that form and they check what box, what days of the week they're doing it, that those are the weeks they're doing it. I think it was before you came on board at Trini Zangari and I was advised that they get the license, they can do it whenever. Maybe that form is a way for council to decide, like, you know, every weekend is, all weekend is excessive. Is that an option, maybe?
I don't, I don't know if I agree with that.
I think the summertime is the most, obviously, a couple of months at the summer is that, that these places need to stay open. They have offer that outside entertainment and that's where they make most of their money. You know, so.
A good point.
To, you know, to put a limit on that, I don't think. It's a good idea.
How do you balance it? You know, when you've got an outdoor event every weekend, which I, you know, I think it's great to have, you know, music outside and be able to sit outside in the summer when it's nice out. We don't really have much of that around here. But then you got people that also want to spend time in their own yard, not have to listen to it. I mean, how do we, how do we balance that? I don't want to prohibit it.
No, I don't want to either.
But I, I don't know where that balance is, where, I mean, dude, if, is there, you know, is there an impact fee that we charge? Like a nuisance fee? But, you know, how does that get returned to, you know, the butters that might be complaining? As much as it's gonna go into additional revenue? I don't think that's fair either. I don't know if there's an answer to that.
You know, one, one possibility is that you, you, you limit the duration of the event on cert- on certain days. So you can have live music on a Sunday, but it's gonna end by, you know, late afternoon. You know, if you're gonna do it on a Saturday, it can't be from nine AM to seven PM. It's gonna, you know, so you kind of reduce that, that impact on, on the surrounding neighborhoods, but still, you know, so it's, it's a balance. But I, but I think getting more detail from the applicant at the outset as far as what they, what they foresee. You know, are they looking to do every, every weekend, every day? Or would, you know, could, could we, is there a way to, to, to grant a license that meets their needs? Because they may not, you know, you gotta pay for entertainment, it's hard to get entertainment sometimes. So, but getting more information from them as to what they're looking for as far as generally days of the week, you know, hours, and you can maybe tailor the, the license that meets their needs and, you know, helps, you know, the, the surrounding, the surrounding. you know, helps, you know, the, the surrounding, the surrounding areas, so. I think, I think it will be hard to put it in an, in an ordinance as far as, because every, everyone is different. I think each one has to be taken on a case by case basis. You know, I know in, in Charles Town, you know, they, they granted, you know, a license. You get, you know, five weekends. It's a summer, summer business. So you get five weekends during the summer. You pick, you pick the ones. You get one day during the weekend, or if you'd rather do it during the week, that's fine too. So you can limit things that way. Instead of just being open ended, all right, you've got three hundred and sixty-five days a year and you decide when, where and how many. So without, you know, I think we can do it without being too onerous. And, you know, but by getting that initial feedback from them, this is what do you want? And then can we, can we accommodate that or could we tailor it a little bit more?
And I, I think it should be in the ordinances, so it's clear. As soon as I said, oh, we could, it's on the form and that's how, you know, we're approving it, but then it can just be like really just arbitrary and each council can make a different decision. And we're only here for two years, so if it were in the ordinances, I guess council could change it, but it'll be clear to the applicant what they're going for. And if it is, I like what you said with Charles Town, five opportunities or, or something similar, as long as it's clear.
Well, I think, I think the granting of the license would be clear. It would be very specific. It wouldn't just be you're approved.
Yeah.
You're approved for, you know, whatever, whatever it is, you know, weekends, you know, every weekend, one weekday, you know. Again, getting a sense from the applicant if that's, if that's feasible. I mean, I, I, it's.
Just. Pass up over the gym? Yeah.
Yeah, I noticed a question that kind of restricted, does that negatively impact like fare? Fares using separate outdoor entertainment license?
So they use out, they do utilize outdoor entertainment, but I think a lot of probably difficulty in vetting some of these, it's not the three month license. Maybe not even the six month license, because a lot, the three months, most of them proposed eight and they're trying to book bands and stuff. And maybe the five days, it's, it's not that issue. It's more the one year license. It's kind of, you know, the applicant doesn't know what they're gonna do in any year. And so how those align, you know, it's, it's hard to say, hey, in a year I'm gonna do this, this and that. Unless you ask them to vet it out. But the shorter term licenses are certainly easier to define.
I mean.
Can I answer your question?
Yeah, I just wanna make sure. I mean, best intention, but the collateral impact of the decision, right? I wanna make sure we didn't consider it being problematic, you know?
Yeah. You have more?
I was just gonna say, in reality, an outdoor entertainment license isn't gonna be more than six months based upon the weather. So, you know.
I just wanted to cap, because you were better can't work, what's too late, how many date, what's too early, you know what I mean? So, the noise or, you know, things like that, so.
No, I, I agree. I, you know, you wanna, it doesn't do any good if they have entertainment that no one comes to because it's too short or it's not at a convenient time. So I totally, totally understand that, so.
How do other towns handle this?
So, so a large portion of the towns do more of a is what, is what I'm seeing in that. Some do outdoor entertainment, but it might be handled, it's handled more as a specific provision for those restaurant establishments that want to have, you know, served. And a lot of it, a lot of the provisions in place that we have currently, you know, it says, you know, alcohol should be limited, pack, you know, entertainment shouldn't exceed past service hours, so most of this is written for those specific entities, but as far as different ones, most of them have an event license, so I think they do limit to how many events they can have. They call it outdoor event license, Exeter has for outdoor places of amusement.
We keep looking at our neighbor Charleston, right? So, so the Rascal, they have an outdoor tent. They've got bands almost every weekend. It's pretty popular. They, they must have something in place policy for things like that. I mean, Charleston also has a neighborhood park, which is a little bit of a different situation, but.
Who's in charge of this?
So it might be helpful to maybe look at an example of it, someone that does it by event, just to kind of see if there's something we could do or not, you know, I just.
Yeah, I mean, so Gloucester does, they do a special event license and they define that as any outdoor parade, concert, carnival, festival, fair or other event that may be designated by the town council. Some deal with recreation and if they have a recreation director, she'll determine some of those items.
No, but I think we're thinking, we're thinking more about a restaurant or bar that has a band and they have an outdoor area for that. So it's not really an, an event, like, you know, the Rascal or Richmond Smoke, they, they have more outdoor music than anyplace else, probably.
Right.
So I, I just don't see those as events because they're so frequent. You're gonna apply for ten, twelve events?
Exeter, Exeter falls there as outdoor places of amusement and it includes an amusement park. Which I found interesting. Yeah, in Exeter, yeah.
Yeah, Middletown does it more as special event and that does define outdoor concerts with specific requirements. And a lot of it is where is the event called specific to the property? Where, so some of the recommendations, if we were going to leave it the same, because some of the complaints received is when an entity changes their location for where their concert's being held, it affects different areas of the neighborhood and sound projects differently. So on the application, one of my, Josh and I's recommendations earlier is to see a very simple site plan of that, of where, where exactly, just use the, you know, the Google, uh, Google Docs or a plat map to show exactly where the entertainment's going to be. And then, then council would have more of a review basically on the effects of the surrounding neighborhoods. And then maybe say, okay, you're proposing it here, but maybe it shouldn't. So, but yeah, Middletown defines more of that. But again, if there's an appetite to change it, we can add different examples for that. But with tonight's purposes, it was just to see, is there any appetite to change anything at all? Do we wanna leave it the status quo, giving us some sort of direction of what you like and don't like? And then that way more draft changes and examples of language can be provided.
Yeah. Are you getting a good idea of what we like and don't like on the outdoor entertainment so far? Are you looking for a little more feedback? I have a little bit more I wanna add, but I just wanted to know generally so far.
Yeah, I think.
Okay.
I think the council is going in a direction where we should certainly handle restaurant establishments and outdoor entertainment and all the others and maybe an amendment. Kind of getting feedback and then we can show examples of both.
That would be good.
More feedback would be helpful.
Yeah, I was just thinking about the plat map and the the pet adoption, you know, like, I don't know, as a council member, if I'd need to see that for like where you're gonna put the puppies and things and everything. But I understand, like, it's more about the impact and how it's gonna like traffic in and out more that.
More about traffic control, but also noise.
Yeah.
That's the biggest. If it's a stage and it's a concert, where is that stage located? And if it's changed, then that has an impact on a different neighborhood. We don't have a lot of those, but moving from one end of the property to the other affects a different neighborhood. You know, in a different area. And then we've never heard this before. Well, they've had this license here or there. Well, they changed the location, so. And then it would give the abutting property owners more information on whether they're interested in, in coming out because they're noticed as a butters in an outdoor entertainment license application. So I think that might ease them to.
That makes sense to me. Anybody have more they wanna add? Mark, you have got some?
I was gonna, I say, I, I, I agree with the site, site plan, site map, just in general. Not just for location of entertainment, just again, everything else, parking, ingress, egress. You know, EMS. You know, all of that.
All right. So we'll go on to the next section, indoors. We already talked about indoors, that kind of encompassing or should we? Did you have comments on indoor? You do not.
The only difference is the language is, the weekly personnel on outdoor is quite different than the indoor language. Outdoor entertainment defines how many are on duty per one hundred and fifty persons. And so when the license application does not have how many participants on each event. And so I don't know if that's maybe necessary in outdoor entertainment and maybe changing it to a provision of indoor entertainment that says appropriate. Public safety, the chief of police shall assign an adequate number of officers to the event and shall control the number of persons allowed in the entertainment area of the building. And should be paid at the prevailing hourly rate. But in outdoor entertainment, it specifies for how many people attend the event and I don't know if that's really required or or even tracked, mainly on the outdoor entertainment application. So I don't know how the chief would know about that in advance to know if there's enough now. Now, if the application changes to say, hey, you're gonna have five hundred participants for this event, this event, this event for a small time period, but if it's a one year license for outdoor entertainment, I don't know that that's trackable. So the indoor language to me seems like it would give the authority, but I certainly would wanna have chief's input on that. To make sure that public safety provisions are being.
Makes sense to me. All right, we will go on to the fixuling license, which everyone practices saying after they get elected. We don't have any comments on this one though, do we? Nope, any big counselors have comments on it? All right. We'll go on to the holiday sales, five point five two. We have a few comments on that. Do you wanna kick us off again, Aaron?
It's gonna be to look at state law again to review. Are these all the required holidays that grant a holiday license? This license used to be a Sunday's holiday sale license and Sundays was ruled out of the law quite so many years ago and then holidays were in there and it was governed by specific holidays. So just a double check to make sure that those are the holidays that require a holiday license.
All right. And the five point five six, we'll go on to that. Barry did not have any changes, but did council notice anything as they were going through it that they wanna talk about or ask about?
Yeah.
Sure.
I don't know, Jimmy, wanna take this on? Five point five six oh four, C one.
The recycling required?
Yeah, please. Scroll down there. There was a comment, even though it's not.
Yeah.
So my, my only put on this, but I'll, I'll let Jim get after that for reasons. I, I think given the change in the way the state's operating, we need to charge a fee for recycling now from these haulers to cover our costs to the state by refusing our recycling, because it's gonna end up being a large cost to the town. So I think we need to share that fee. We, we don't, we don't have any idea when, when these haulers come by, what they're dumping in our recycling and then gets up to Johnston and then they charge us because they refuse it. So as we've discussed, it's just the taxpayer is just eating it.
Are, are you proposing just the haulers or the individual, like, residents as we go to the transfer station?
Let's see what Jim has to say.
All right.
Yeah. And just the background of this was that when RP is bringing recycled material either collected from residents to the transfer station and that truck goes up to the state landfill. If the state determines that there's a, a non-conformance with that load, the entire load is scrapped and a fine is issued against the town. My problem with that is that I think, I can't remember exactly what Kendra had said, but we've incurred about fifteen hundred dollars in fines already this year with no, no information about what the, what the violation was, you know, there's, there's nothing. It's very arbitrary. And it's too loose and I think, I don't see it, it seems like a state money making plan, frankly. So I don't think that we're gonna solve that. Yeah, you know, I don't think we're gonna solve that with finding the, the hauler. I, I think I'd like to have that fine removed, like at the state level and I've talked to our state rep about looking into that. Because if it's happening, it wasn't happening out of the towns as well. And there's thousands and thousands of dollars that are probably being captured from municipalities without any oversight whatsoever. So I'd rather, I'd like to see that just, you know, if they have to, like, if the truck is frozen in the winter, they'll dump it right on the landfill. They're not even putting their recycling, like, they're not, they're not that careful with it, right? So, I mean, don't find us for it. I'd rather see it go away. So I don't wanna handle it locally. I'd like it to be handled statewide and I've already put that in in motion with our state rep. So it's just, it's like taxation without representation. They're, they're just finding us. So it's not, it's all right. Anyway, so I don't think we should have anything here, but we do need to, you know, shine a light on that issue and get it resolved.
Yeah, good, because my concern would be if we put it onto the business, that they're just gonna charge us more.
It's gonna trickle down. Yeah. Oh, the house.
Yeah.
Are feasible for transportation, whatever.
Is that what you're gonna say?
No, I know that they think when they first were making an issue of it in Johnston, they were, were charging that full fee, but I think they knocked it down pretty substantially now, but I mean, obviously you don't want any fee, but you know.
Like two hundred and fifty dollars. That's up.
Oh, yeah.
Jeff, does West Hurley Public Works collect garbage and recycling or does that also kind of contract it out essentially? Okay, how, how do they handle it? What's the same way we do it here? Just collect the recycling and then ship it off to Johnson?
Yes. Yep.
All right, so we're leaving that alone for now. And we'll learn more someday. So on to five point five eight, seasonal recreational facilities and seasonal tourist accommodations. Josh Jordan had a comment here and that's just him enforcing that he wants to keep those in place, those regulations in place? Or those not listed here?
The zoning use determination is covered in that general section of licenses, so I think that that's covered there, but maybe adding it to this, this license ordinance specifically would probably help a little bit. And then, you know, defining clearly off-season living. The terms of the license are kind of difficult because it says it's only seasonally. However, the term of the license could be any time during the year. But they have to have some sort of closure. So we've changed how we issue the license when we actually issue a certificate that, because the language says it should be issued based on the, the starting time on the application and the closing time of the application. So that I think helps define what seasonal is. There could be another definition in that, that might help further, but that's, that's something. The only other thing that I had in it as well is what is other seasonal tourist accommodation? With a lot of the discussions of Airbnbs and VBOs and regulating, I'm not sure that, I, I don't think this would be written well before that in two thousand and five. But maybe defining what that is. If we're reviewing, you know, if we're gonna make any.
Yeah. Yeah, any council comments on this?
I, so the first section lists the types of facilities that are covered. And I don't know that I could think of anything else, so maybe we can just take out this other seasonal tourist accommodation. I mean, the list is hotels, motels, motocross rines, tourist cabins, camping areas, recreational campgrounds, facilities for recreational vehicles and trailers. I don't, I think that covered, I don't know what else that could be. So I, I think we can just take out that phrase or other. And I, I guess maybe section one, you know, we need to better define that the license required is for those facilities listed in section. And I, I guess maybe section one, you know, we need to better define that the license required is for those facilities listed in section. Fifty-eight point zero one zero. But I, I don't see. I'm sure someone would think, you know, who knows?
Yeah, well.
The chances of it coming up are so slim, it's not, it's not, it's not worth having it there, it can make it sound like there's some other thing. That we're gonna see, so I, I would say, take that, take that phrase out.
Unless there was an intent back then is to regulate those Airbnb, but that's not.
That's not a seasonal tourist account, that's different, it's totally different. I think if we were gonna do that, that'd be a totally separate.
Yeah.
Ordinance.
Yeah, right.
Altogether.
Would be. Um, seeing that we're getting to eight fifty-seven, we have a, one of our rules and procedures, we don't go past nine o'clock without a motion from council, so is anybody wanting to do that?
And we'll continue that right down.
Any thoughts? All right, go to our vote, Councilor Dinsmore.
Good, yes.
Uh, Madnick.
Yes.
Kamishano.
Yes.
Reynolds.
Yes.
And Wilcox, yes. All right, so we're going past nine. Um. All right, so we're still in the seasonal recreational facilities, any other thoughts on it?
So Erin, it looks like um, fifty-eight point zero four zero says that. It goes to the, you know, the application goes to the zoning enforcement officer. Isn't that what we were just talking about adding, needing to add?
Not a zoning determination. New license.
Oh, you mean to make sure that it's located in the appropriate area? Okay. So. Oh, okay, so the zoning enforcement reviews the facility to make sure the facility, components comply. Whereas the use determination. Verifies that. The uses permitted in the location. Okay. Got it.
All right. All right, I'm reading.
And then there's that section B is there is. The facility should have the right to apply for an amendment of the license for additional units, rooms, cabins, sites for individual lease. Areas during the term of the license? How is this administered? And um. How are they heard? Like, is it a, is it a new application? It doesn't define as an expansion of use? It's different um, licenses we have do that, I mean. I don't know.
I think we.
Is this something you want to further define or remove, or what?
I'm just trying to figure out, because of the criteria for season recreation is so specific. That, you know, the applicant needs to submit a site plan, the number of units and stuff, and so, and then they're charged based on those units. Why this amendment is just kind of in there without any other. Terms on how an amendment would be dealt with, so. I don't. I don't know that, what the reason for that is. And I, I think it should just.
Okay.
Well, I was just gonna say, we could just say that. The, you know, at, at, a, an application for amendment shall be. Um. Considered in the same manner as a. Uh, new application. And that way, there's a process if someone, you know, halfway through their season says, oh, you know what, I'm gonna add. You know, ten new sites to the. You know, to the campground. They can do that, um, but they gotta come in and, you know. You know, a new application with respect to those additional units. So it would be based, you know, the fees and everything would be based upon the additional. This, so that way you're allowing expansion if, if they wanna do it, and, but it's gonna follow, but then you've got a process now.
Yeah. Go ahead, Jim.
Interesting question, I mean, there's um, the fee for the first person, there's a big fee for the amendment?
Yeah.
Because the amendment, if it's going through the same process, would have the same staff time and notice requirements. So when, it's not like renewals where it's a little simpler.
And the only reason is, we don't, I mean, we don't know how big the amendment is, you know, might be a small change, that's all.
That's true.
Yeah, but those fees are determined based on how many units.
Right, so it's.
Code, so it might, it might cover it, but anyway, the only thing that would be different is that it's a public, and they would have, you know, public notice requirement. That would be an additional fee outside that, but. I mean, most of them are gonna come in and say, in the beginning of their season, they want two hundred sites, or, you know, I don't. Know that many of them, because it's seasonal, would come in and say August and say, when I amend my application for two more months. But adding something, either eliminating or saying it should be treated, I will.
I would just say the same process, that way you're giving them the option, it's not, you're not restricting if they wanna do it.
All right. On to dog kennels. Um, can I kick us off with a question? What is the difference between a dog kennel and a doggy daycare? I know that was something you had here, but I just, I don't know what the difference between the two are.
So we don't define doggy daycare in our, in this provision of the ordinance, it's an accessory use. In zoning, but basically, doggy daycare is a daytime hour where boarding is overnight twenty-four hours. And so um. We d- define kennels, either boarding or breeding. And um. And this was all written against a doggy daycares, but um.
Because even as I read it, it doesn't say that boarding dog kennel is twenty-four hours or more, it just says a place where dogs are sheltered, fed and watered.
I think it comes in something.
Okay. Which, back to a point, I think that was made earlier um, by Councilor Madnick, cuz we shouldn't be having people go too many places to get the right information.
Right.
To be honest, so that would be, that's a great suggestion to define a boarding kennel as um, over twenty-four hours and a doggy daycare is under. Yeah.
But a dog kennel in Richmond is regulated under the zoning code specific to couple criteria. Where a dog kennel is without restrictive use of animals is five acres or more, I think. Um, and then there is a provision that they can, how in part of this. It's only for a special use permit, should they not get that, that is limited to less than five dogs, I think is in zoning court. Is, is in the zoning code, but with, you know. A lot of um, our new businesses that have opened doing that facility. Um, intend on getting, coming out with a dog kennel license, and that, they're really not fitting in there, so. Um, it gives, it's kind of confusing for that, cuz they're like, we are caring for them, we're, 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 you know, we're feeding them, we're. Providing shelter. We're dog kennels, but they're not under.
Yeah, the oven that can happen to with those is that there are instances where something happens with the owner of the dog, and they cannot pick the dog up, and they have to keep the dog overnight. So they would be not compliant, so we have to be, you know, it's just those, that can happen.
So just maybe expanding on those definitions. Just because there's been quite a few of them coming up uh, recently, and a lot of them, when they read this language goes, oh, I'm getting a dog kennel license. And they're not really getting that.
But I thought when I read it, did you have something to add, Jeff?
How much is a dog kennel license?
Um, that's in the schedule fees, I assume, right?
Yeah.
And if the operating work dog kennel is twenty-five dollars. Um, and a breeding is twenty-five dollars. Yeah, so, under, under this review. The fees are all defined in chapter three oh six. So I know it's kind of late tonight, but. Some of this review was, was saying, hey, are we in line with other fees, so those are in a separate section.
That we'll get to at the end. Um.
So whether you want to look in defining that and adding that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think we should add it since it's, it's, if, if we're gonna regulate other areas where dogs are kept. Um, we should, we should. Add that, since it's kind of a new, new thing, and. Obviously, the, the zoning requirements wouldn't be the same, so um. Cuz it's a temporary.
All right, so. We got a consensus on that, we'll move on to the mobile food establishments. Which we kind of already talked about, um, do we need to go through it again? Do you have more, or? Something else we should add?
Can we go through it quick, because it was.
Yeah, sure, what, what do we got? What'd you like to say or ask? Something new, Dad?
No.
Okay.
Sorry.
No, you're fine, um, wanna make sure. And there's lots of scroll-throughs in the next chapter we're on.
So I think event license. Kind of talked about. And then through the review, there's other types of licenses by other town, I'm not suggesting any of these, it's just. Some of them came up, a lot of people ask specifically, do they need a yard sale permit?
I don't want one.
Saying that, but just during the review, just propose different types of licenses, there is a farmer's market license, but a lot, some of that. Is more of a gathering of space that they, I think, define separated out from their event gathering to a farmer's market.
So this is based on questions you've received?
Yes, correct, correct, yep.
All right, anybody have anything they wanna consider or further define? I was thinking that farmer's market should be further defined as we could, that's why I had brought it up earlier, um. You know, we wanna bring them to towns, we don't want it to be overregulated, but we also, you know, it's an event, and it's gonna be. Hopefully bringing in a good amount of people, so. I think that's something that I'd like to see a draft of, what it would look like.
Yeah.
Anybody else have anything?
No.
Nope, all right, so we're on to the schedule of fees, I think, right? All right.
So back to business registration, uh, we, we charge nothing for the license. Should we, whether we change it to a general business or put that up registration, I think. More towards a general business is. Different towns, Fervos twenty-five, Center Falls ten, Jamestown a hundred, Mishawar I'm twenty-five. And it's two hundred, they don't charge if you have another license. Um, within the town, but. You know, keeping a low. Cost because it's not, there's not a lot of administrative, you want some of those, that's different than outdoor entertainment. Which requires further staff time, but. You know, taking a look at what that. If any, if, if not, uh, what that would be.
Okay, so we'll have you determine what you think it would be based on. The time it takes, I guess.
Just a range, maybe?
Yeah, a good range.
Or do you wanna charge, I mean, just any kind of direction there?
I, I think, I think a small fee is fine, twenty-five to fifty, it looks like everyone else is around twenty-five, so. It's just, it's not, like you said, it's not as time-intensive. Um, and this is something that's not gonna be renewed either, it's gonna be a one-time. Based upon.
Fee and that, for the whole process that's.
Right.
More administrative.
Yeah.
And then, I apologize, um, we didn't bring up, some towns have the um, staff administratively handled. General licenses like we do now, um. Given that, that is, that I think should probably continue based on the volume and not. There is staff oversight on certain provisions, so I'm not sure if those should be appropriate to go on.
Right. I agree.
All right. I'm good, we're gonna go on to the next one.
So alcohol licenses, different classes. Uh, we don't have, we have, we're class A, we have class B tavern, vitular. And vitular limited, it's pretty much the main license types we have. As well as, you know, recently a class F license or F one. So other towns, you know, are substantially larger than Richmond. So, but not all that are local near us, so. You know, that's a, you know, Exeter's pretty similar to us, Hockington, or Class A, you know, they're our most compared to town. They're eight hundred, a thousand, fifteen hundred, where we're seven, where we're um. Five hundred, eight hundred, eight fifty, so. If any at all wanna be adjusted, but, you know, we were asked to look at surrounding fees, so just. Uh, there is an administrative fee on that license, and that was due when of twenty-five dollars. I frankly think it should be completely eliminated because uh, we don't send large packets, so there's not that cost to do that. And so. I just think it should be removed.
That was not even.
Yeah, I agree, I, I mean, I agree with that, if they're not incurring that cost, there's no sense. You know, there should be some rhyme or reason to the fee, we shouldn't just charge a fee for the sake of charging a fee. So I agree, we should remove that.
But there's no appetite to change anything?
We're not that far off.
No.
Um, in my opinion, but I'm open to whatever any of us wants to say, Jimmy got something?
No, I was just looking at, yeah, we're, we're on.
Mark, you got something?
I don't know if we wanna raise the class F, uh. Maybe to fifty, I mean, that's not a lot, but I'm just, you know, it's. What's the difference between class F and class F one?
So class F is beer and wine, F one would allow like a lot of beverage, like a. Um, like vodka, prepackaged drink, though, not hard liquor as far as.
Like a truly or a.
Exactly.
Okay.
All right, so.
I, I think F and F one should probably be the same. At least, so maybe they should both be thirty-five, or more, you know? Again, when I'm talking. It's not gonna. Yeah. But.
Agree with the same prices.
We wanna make it fifty, or do we wanna keep it at thirty-five?
I think thirty-five is fine.
I do too, um, yeah.
All right.
We're not, we're not saving the budget on that.
Yeah, all right. Um. Okay.
The familiar games, if we can't, I think we discussed that, if we can't get rid of. It because of state law, we'll eliminate the fee. It's what I think the consensus of.
Yeah.
And then in that section is a closing out sale provision. Which, you know, I was aware, and I don't know how this would ever be enforced. This is going out of sale, I certainly don't think we should. Make them get a hundred dollar permit.
Or spot in the world?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
So I don't know if that's state law that we need to have it, but if not.
I can kind of see its intention, um, you know, those businesses that come in with the intention of only being open short-term and then closing, like, and having a huge sale, and. I'm not sure if that's their intention, but sure does look like it sometimes. Um, but I agree, how is this enforced? Is it worth enforcing for a hundred dollars? Um, so. Yeah. What's everyone else think?
I think that's fine, as long as it's consistent with state law, I mean.
Yeah. Agreed.
All right.
If it doesn't violate state law, you're good.
Right, fee for dog kennels. So we are kind of in line here, except Exeter is a hundred dollars. But I'm noticing most, and she, or most municipalities don't even bother licensing it.
Um, well, when I'll say when we did this review, it was based on ordinance, uh, a bit, based on what was available on the website.
Okay.
Just because.
There could be more, okay.
Reference, we looked at um, this towns that are similar. You know, we're not looking at Hockington and Providence certainly for license fees, so. Some weren't just readily available online, doesn't mean that. Some weren't just readily available online, doesn't mean that they.
Okay.
For the time period.
Thank you, I appreciate that, um, that clarity, Mark, you have something you want to add?
I was gonna say, as long as you think the fee still covers the time required, I think that's, that's what we need to be looking at. I think twenty-five still, you know, basically an hour and plus of, of staff time to process something like this.
Yeah.
You know, I think.
Design is a black component, for, in the licensing provision, because some of the big dog kennels. Have had to go through a, they'll be enforcement, because it's, because of how it's ran, and so there is a fee on that, so, you know, I feel.
Okay, yeah, sure, Jim.
Did I miss that, is there, is there a doggy daycare one as well?
Well, we don't have that, so we'll have to.
We'll have to put it in there, too, okay.
It should be the same, I think.
Same to you.
Yeah. Um, alright, so on to entertainment. What are we thinking here?
Well, I agree with Erin suggesting that we eliminate the administrative fee again, if we're not mailing out. Packets. How do we compare?
Just for reference on some of these, um. You know, the fee is, you know, I can speak to Jamestown, the Jamestown, you know, the five dollar fee is for. One event specifically at their publicly maintained facility, so, um.
It's not really.
More of like a vendor fee for some of that, so, that five dollars is kind of skewed in that number.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you for clarifying, that one was a little awkward, um. Anybody else have thoughts?
I think, they, they seem in line, I don't.
Yeah. Alright, so we'll go on to the secondhand dealers licenses. Your question here, Erin, it's just five dollars?
It's five dollars, or casting and men.
Why do we even have that?
I don't, one, I don't know. That part should be eliminated, but if we do have to issue it, I mean, five dollars, the other towns are a hundred, I don't even know.
Remember the use code table, we don't even allow this type of use in town. Unless it's done inside a drawer.
Let's take your word on it. Unless we look it up, but that's a good point, I'm sure you could.
If it, uh, I mean, I could, it's up to you guys, I mean, it's getting late, but. It would only be allowed in industrial area, and like, what's the point of five dollars?
Yeah.
If you're already permitting it to happen, what's, why, why is this even here, it's, no one's probably even looked at this in twenty years. Although it was updated in twenty-two.
Maybe another portion of it was, like another section, like another sentence, or something, um. Could also happen, so, yeah, so we're kind of in an agreement here that we'd remove it, I'm sure there's a consensus on that, um. The hawkers and peddlers license and outdoor sales people, persons. Um, I know we discussed earlier, increasing this, but what are we thinking about increasing it to? Does anybody have any thoughts that they want to bring up? Looking?
Well, the. The, the fees are all over the place for all the towns.
Hmm.
And the thirty-day fee for us versus a hundred, uh, the, the one-year fee didn't really make much sense, it's like, well, if you're gonna get. Thirty-day fee for twenty-five, and the one-year fee is a hundred dollars, might as well get the one-year fee, and you can door-to-door sales for the entire year. Um, as I, I mentioned earlier, you know, I suggested we change the time. End from eight P M, change it to seven P M. A lot of people think that door-to-door sales is a nuisance. Um, you know, it's like, what, what's reasonable, if it's a nuisance, and then you increase the fee. Will it prohibit people from actually getting a license? But then, they're just gonna do it without the license, so you're not really solving anything. People are still gonna do it anyway, and if someone comes to your door, and you're like, hey, I don't want this, and then you, you call the, with the, the police station, they say, okay, and they come out. It's just, it's a lot of work for not a lot of gain.
Hmm.
I don't think there's a real answer to it, I, I know it's a nuisance, I know that the last two door-to-door sales licenses I voted no against, because I don't support it. Um, but as Mark said, I mean, if it's, if it's state law, and we have to issue door-to-door sales licenses, in fact, even having a vote on it is moot. Because you, you can't vote no.
I think it says may, in the state, like the town may create this license, because I did look a few of them up. Um, and I think this was one, because I was most curious about, and any state enabling legis- legislation says, you know, the town or city may do this.
I mean, so, if you will get it from the state, so we'll go, let's go to the fees for a sec, since we're talking, it's a hundred dollars per year, and then you divide that per month. And we're looking at less than ten bucks a month, eight dollars per month, so, our thirty-day fee isn't really. Consistent with our one-year fee, so do we make them more consistent? Do we make it? You don't want to make it too expensive where you're prohibiting someone from doing their job, but if the residents think it's a nuisance. Again, it's a slippery slope, because then if you make it too expensive, they'll go without a license, and they're gonna do it anyway. So what I'm saying is, I don't know if there's an answer to it, other than the fee structure doesn't make a lot of sense. And I disagree with you, and as long as I can vote for on it.
And then, um, anybody else have thoughts on that? You got nothing? Alright, do anybody else have thoughts? Um, yeah, sure, go ahead, Mark.
So just along those lines, to, to make them align better, if, if the month, the thirty-day fee is twenty-five, and we raise the year to two hundred and fifty. That makes it more. You know, that, that would be, you know. More in line with, you know, the. Proportional.
It's similar to less work, they're two hundred dollars if you live in town, three hundred if you're out of town, and a wound socket's five hundred dollars annually.
And would that fee include the lanyard, or do you want to charge it a different?
No, I think if we, I would say if we increase it to two fifty, that it would include.
That would, but the, I don't know, the thirty-day, twenty-five.
Oh, well, then we'd have, yeah, then maybe we have to, maybe we would charge a separate, but I don't know what the cost of producing those is, ten dollars.
Hmm.
I think we should isolate that fee, because that could change, and we want to be able to modify that without modifying the door-to-door sales license fee.
Alright.
We'd have to modify it either way, it's the same ordinance. But I know what you mean, but I know what you mean.
We might have said, oh, fifteen bucks, that covers for like ten years, you don't have to.
It could help break down the fee, um, to show that it exists, and what it exists for. You know, when they're giving the lanyard, like this is really important, because people need to know who you are, and what you're doing. Um, so breaking it out is beneficial for a few reasons. Um, but do we have a little bit of a consensus on that, or not really, we're kind of all over the place?
So, I, I think we do, so I think two fifty for the one year, and we wouldn't charge the lanyard additional fee. And then for thirty, twenty-five, and then I can get you, or, two fifty would include it on both, and the lanyard. I can give you guys an estimate of what that cost is, as we come through in this process, this is, we have a couple more meetings.
Yes.
We do.
Fine tune it.
That sounds good, go ahead, Jim.
No, I was just gonna say, if you find out that it's something more than ten dollars, then incorporate it to the cost, so that we have that standard lanyard.
So you're putting the hawker, the peddler, and the door all together?
No, 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 just, just door to door, hawkers and peddlers would stay the same. Because that's typically like one event.
Alright, um, laundries, uh, we currently don't have an active license for this type.
The laundries are considered different than dye painters, um, and. Well, I'm not sure we want to eliminate it, or even make any revisions, but, ten dollars for laundry license.
If we don't have a license that aligns with it, we should eliminate it, right?
But currently, we don't have a business that might operate, but.
Okay.
Well, I think, I mean, ten is, you know, I would, I would say at least twenty-five, that seems to be the minimum of all the, all of the others, so. Again, it's not something we're spending a lot of time on.
Water mats are permitted in town, various zones.
Alright, so, your directive. Then, yeah.
Okay, good.
Alright, private detective license. Looks like we're kind of in line with other towns, if not a little more, all the ones you were able to find, and that are similar to us, um. Anybody have anything they want to change on that, or we could leave it? Alright, we'll move on to the next one, um, question and hauling, annual fee a hundred fifty. What are we thinking on that? We're not too far off from others. Alright, holiday sale license. Alright, no comments on that either, seasonal recreational facilities, there's no comments there, I'm guessing we'll leave that one the same.
Yeah, I mean, my concern with that is that we cover our administrative costs, I think, just, I mean, these are, these are not, um. They're not revenue generating type of things, so.
Right, um, and the vitruling licenses, last one, also no comment, so. I think we've gone through everything Erin gave us, if I'm not mistaken, is that right, Erin? Thank you so much for all that, that was in-depth, that was amazing, um, it's exactly what we needed to digest it. I can't thank you enough for it, honestly.
Good, thank you.
That was great.
Motion to take a five-minute recess.
I'll second it, um, first we take a five-minute recess, use the bathroom, refill on water, vote, Councilor Dinsmore?
Yes.
Mad Nick?
Hi.
Well.
Yes.
Wilcox, yes. Will Cox, yes. Aaron, are you ready, actually? Yes, okay.
Motion to read.
Second.
We got a motion, our second, we'll go for our vote, Councilor Dinsmore.
Yes.
Mad Nick.
Yes.
Al Machado.
Yes.
Reynolds.
Yes.
And Wilcox, yes. All right, so now we're on to the next item on the agenda. I'm gonna send it over to Dan to pick us off.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair. So, um, prior to opening this up, I have a statement I'd like to read. Um, I'd like to take the opportunity, set the facts straight regarding my support for involvement in the Buttonwoods motocross track. Like most residents from Richmond and member of the planning board, sometime around the beginning of 2022, I was made aware of a motocross track that was present on Buttonwoods Road, situated in a mixed-use area but zoned residential. At this time, all motor vehicle racing was prohibited in Richmond by ordinance. At some point, the town notified the property owner that motor vehicle racing was prohibited and lawsuits were filed, was not involved in this matter. On October 27th, 2022, while canvassing for my first campaign for town council, I met with and spoke to Mr. Carlson and some of his associates on his property about the issues with the town. I made it clear that I knew nothing about the legal issues, but I explained that I supported a place for people to ride and recommended that he submit an application for a zone change and use code change to permit motocross racing. On August 8th, 2023, the application to change the zone and permit motocross racing was presented to the planning board to provide an advisory opinion and recommendation to the town council. I was the vice chair and due to the absence of the chair, I led the meeting. The minutes are clear that I was in favor of the changes and also helped guide the board in creating a new, a new use code specific to motocross, to pass unanimously. On September 5th, 2023, the town council approved the application and the recommendation from the board. However, at the time, the council set two restricted and burdensome conditions. I was not aware of those two conditions that the town council adopted until I was elected and the lawsuit between the town and Mr. Carlson was discussed in executive session. At that time, I realized that the conditions were harmful and improper. I explained to staff and the council why I thought that the conditions were improper, unfair to the property owner. It was I that requested the solicitor to reach out to Carlson's attorney. I backchamped with support from the entire council. On March 4th, 2025, Mr. Carlson requested the conditions be removed, in which I publicly made a detailed and persuasive argument on why the conditions should be removed. This council voted unanimously to remove the conditions. The fact is, no one has been more critical in supporting Mr. Carlson and his business while balancing the best interests of the town as a whole since 2022. As an avid auto and race enthusiast, including racing my own vehicle, my goal is to legitimize motor vehicle racing in Richmond and Rhode Island, not just for motocross, but for other motor vehicle uses as well. This will allow people to safely and legally enjoy their interest in racing. My hope is that other towns recognize the importance of off-road racing and adopt similar approaches to legalize it. So now, let's take the temperature down, let's discuss this as adults, talk about it, and move through it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Do you want to go over a little bit of the recommendations you've made?
All right, let's do this. Okay, so, for it's a lot of people know, forty-four pages documentation. This was purely for transparency. So what I did, um, after recognizing that those two conditions that were set on the motocross facility were improper, I went and started looking at different motocross facilities around New England, figuring, hey, a lot of people go use them. I called a variety of different towns in different states and asked what kind of policies they have in place to, um, permit and legalize motocross racing. Said, I, well, I don't know anything about this, um, let me figure it out. That evolved into my thought that, well, why don't you, why not just, instead of sticking with motocross, why don't we open up to all types of motor vehicle racing? And, um, you know, as I stated, I'm originally from New Hampshire. I've been here since 2016, um, in Richmond as a resident. You know, this, I value this town, I'm a resident here, I'm gonna be here for a long time. Um, New Hampshire, interestingly enough, you know, the live free or die state, um, you would think, very libertarian, um, not a lot of regulation. They regulate the heck out of motor vehicle racing. It's in state statutes, and the state statute allows, um, different towns to apply by, their own bylaws. So you get, you might be familiar, there's a number of small oval tracks. Um, there's Lenary Speedway, there's Hudson Speedway, Star Speedway, Lee Speedway, they've got New Hampshire Motor Speedway, which I've raced at quite a few times. Um, they also have a variety of different, uh, motocross tracks as well. There's also motocross tracks in Lyman, Maine. There's, uh, motocross tracks in Southwood, Mass, Middleboro, Mass, Minno, Maine. So, why am I telling all this? Because I did the work, I did my job as an elected official to determine what other states are doing to not reinvent the wheel and say, all right, I'm gonna present this to the town, I'm gonna present this to our state legislator to get a resolution passed by the general assembly to permit us to legalize it. Because right now, in the state of Rhode Island, no motor vehicle racing is legal. Nor is it e-lead, it's just not in the state statute. I want to make it legal. And Richmond is gonna set the bar for doing that. And I think with this council and with everyone we have here tonight, I think we can make this work and we can get this approved. That is my intention. It is not my intention to prevent motocross racing in Richmond, is not my intention to prevent motor vehicle racing in Richmond or anywhere else in Rhode Island. So, I think that's pretty clear. As I said, the rest of the information that was provided is the same stuff that I looked at. I presented it to the public because I wanted everyone to take a look at it. And these, their recommendations, they're things that I said, hey, you know, some of these things look good, some didn't look good. Let's have the conversation about it. Um, like I said, I've done plenty of racing, so some of this stuff for me is, is fairly standard, right? You have bathrooms, you have a dumpster. Um, do you have ingress and egress for EMS and fire? I mean, what happens, let's say, for instance, um, you know, here's a good example. So Chris Menta, who used to own Richmond Farms, he came to me one day and he said, hey, I want to put a go-kart track in. You guys noticed there was a pretty big clearing next to Richmond Farms. He intended on putting a go-track, go-kart track there, but he waited until, um, the state was done with remodeling ninety-five in the bridge. Eventually sold. Well, we want to have go-kart tracks, we don't have any way to legalize them. But we need to come up with a way to legalize it, we need to get ahead of it now. And so I like to be proactive. I want to be able to legitimize all kinds of motor vehicle racing, um, allow, you know, I know a lot of people here from motocross, but specifically so that Mr. Carlson can get a license to operate. And so the state doesn't come down on him. I'm trying to help. And I've only helped for three years. And I appreciate if people are able to, uh, work constructively to do this.
Thank you, Dan, I appreciate that. I did make, um, an announcement at the beginning of the meeting that I want to repeat just because I think there's a lot that goes into the process of creating ordinances. Um, and tonight is just someone who wanted to present their idea. It's the beginning thought. And it's really important, I, and I agree, as Counselor Mad Nick had said, that elected officials have the opportunity to discuss this. Um, there will be tons of opportunity for public comment on all of the items we discussed tonight, because we made a lot of changes. They're all not permanent, you know, we sent them over to our town clerk and our town solicitor to review, come back with a draft for us, we'll review it again. Once council has something that we like for our town, then it goes through a process of a public hearing. So there are so many steps to changing ordinances that, that come through, and, um, yeah, so this is just the beginning of, of that overall process. So there's so much more, um, to come or not, if council decides we don't want to do anything at all with anything we discussed today. So with that, do we have, um, any counselors who want to share their opinion? Uh, another thing, we're gonna hold public comment till council's done, because that's just how we always do it. We were elected to have our discussions, we need to do it, and then we'll hear from the public. Anyway, does council have anything they'd like to say? On a potential motocross action survey, Mark?
So I, so I would want to confirm what I think Dan has already said, but just make sure. So we need to get enabling legislation from the general assembly to, to legalize and regulate motor vehicle racing. Is that right, Solicitor?
Yeah, that's what, that's what Counselor Mad Nick is proposing.
Right. And that's. And so my question is, because I've had this experience, is that, we want, I don't, and I don't know if it has to go in the resolution this way, but how specific do we need to be in the resolution to the general assembly? I've run into circumstances where the enabling legislation isn't detailed enough as far as what the town can regulate, and then it becomes an issue with, with it. So I don't know how, you know, for the purposes of a resolution, how detailed we need to be as far as the, areas of regulation that we want to be enabled to.
I think your resolution could be as detailed as you can, and then when you're, when Ms. Carter, Rep. Carter, Cotter gets a hold of it, and then she gets to the state house, if she can get that heard, uh, I would, I would request a hearing where you can be heard as to why you think it's important and make your case. So Counselor Mad Nick could do that in just a straight legislative process.
I did draft the resolution, if you saw that.
I did, and my thought is, I, I think it might need to be more detailed as far as the different aspects of racing that we want to regulate. The facility, the, you know, um, itself, the, um, traffic, the, um, the vehicles as far as making sure that, the biggest one is making sure they have mufflers. Um, you know, the, so I think we need to be a little more specific in the resolution that these are the areas of, you know, um, regulation and legalization that we want to, to talk about.
I actually disagree. Um, I think that this, the, and, and I learned that through looking through other ones, the state kind of just allows us to make the decision as far as what we want for our town. I like consistency across the state, but it, I don't know, if it's gonna be our ordinances, I wouldn't want the state overarching too much onto that.
I want to keep it broad. I want to keep it open so that we can permit any type of motor vehicle racing.
That's fine, as long as the legislate, enabling legislation is, is, is broad, but not so vague that you, you can't figure out what you can regulate, so.
Yeah.
Um, I, you know, like I said, I know from experience in connection with regulations of, of mopeds, that the enabling legislation said, you know, you, the town can enact ordinances regulating six different criteria. And if you don't fit into those six different criteria, you can't regulate. So I, either it's gotta be very broad to give us that latitude that we want. I guess that's my only point, it has to be broad enough so we can do what we need to do.
Jim, did you have something you wanted to add?
Yeah, no, I was just gonna say, uh, I, I would like it to be broad, uh, so that we can make, um, determinations of each year.
Is anyone from the Washington County Fairground still here?
Maybe, but we're gonna finish our council discussion, then go to the public.
No, I just, I want, maybe you guys know, how many times do they have tractor pulls? I want tractor pulls, I go to them all the time, I would love to see more of those in Richmond. And hopefully this makes it.
Sure, go ahead, Aaron.
I just actually received a chat from, um, representation of the fair. They were here earlier and had legal representation to discuss matters. And so they, they had concerns that if public comments can be allowed, it changed their envisioning of tonight. Because they have legal counsel here to maybe bring comments on some of those matters, so. I would just bring it forward. But I can probably answer the fair, um, question about pulls, but, they hold the annual, obviously, the Washington County Fair in August. There is, um, the SRI Fair, but it doesn't have a polling component. And then there's small clubs that utilize the property for some pulls. Unfortunately, Scott's not here, he would know exactly how many.
Yeah.
Um, but I could, I would probably say at least maybe the.
Do they get perm, so let's, let me ask, this kind of gets into the other, or do they pull part, like an outdoor event?
Who are the events do get that outdoor provision? Um, what, if it's held privately within their own club, because they are a sub-entity, it's a club and it's not necessarily open to the public, then, no, they do not, and, um, they permit.
And I think you could, again, you, all of this depends upon how you define racing. Um, I think you can exclude pull as, it's not, you know, it's, it's one. It's, but it, it falls under the, you know, the event, so you're dealing, they're, they're still getting a license as an event, so you're dealing with the same concerns. You know, again, with site plans and noise and, you know, duration and all that. So I think, you know, if, if that was one of the concerns that, that, that they had, um, you know, I think that can be, that can be addressed.
They, they also have tractor racing, it's not just the pulls.
During the fair itself.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I think back to your point, it's not just about, you know, that entity, it's about bringing in other places that, or, or regulating other entities that may want to come, go-karts would be awesome.
Yeah, I mean, it's very possible someone, you know, has a piece of property here, they want to construct an eighth mile oval. I mean, if it's, you know, we don't have it permitted yet, but someone wants to do it, they can come to the town, they can go to the planning board and they can ask for it. You know, I know that years ago, there was some interest in putting a dragway in, and I know that the town didn't want that, it's, you know, new in dragway is pretty substantial. I'm not sure that, that would be a amendment to town residents, but, you know, small scale things.
Clarified, they don't have tractors. That's different than tractor.
Right, right. Lawn tractors.
Pretty cool.
Right, so what is council thinking we'd like to do on this one?
Uh, well, I, I mean, I support, um, getting, uh, a resolution to the general assembly, um, to allow us to do this, so we can, you know, allow it and then make sure that it's done, uh, in a way that protects the public and the participants.
Yeah.
So I, I had a thought, is, um, in order to, to really make this happen, so the session only goes until June, so we'd have to get a resolution fairly soon. My thought was that, um, if we implement a policy such as this, that we make it effective next year. So it gives, you know, plenty of time for people to really digest it and gives us time to do it. We get the resolution in, um, it still gives us time to work on it. And even if we got the resolution in like early January for the start of the next session, that still gives us time, we can implement it, you know, when the season opens, when it gets warmer. So there's a couple of different options.
Yeah.
We have to, we kind of have to draft ordinance, which is why I presented regi, uh, recommendations, things to discuss that we may or may not want.
Yeah, some of your.
If you guys want to go through them or not.
I do, I do, for clarity for the public, because some of your recommendations I don't like, uh, but some of them I do, and I think that, um, that's okay. Some of them that stood out.
They should all be question marks.
Didn't, they should all be question marks? I mean, there are a lot of question marks, there were a lot of question marks on this, on this, uh, second page here. But some of the things I didn't like that were written, and maybe they're done in other towns, but having the property owner pay for noise level reading, um, I think that just comes out of our collective tax dollars, and that should be read. It should be clear it's read from the property of the complainant. Also, having the owners pay for EMS or fire. EMS and fire in Richmond, they're not our entities, so we don't control their budgets, don't control what they do, but then further, it really should be paid for by the patient. Um, if you have a medical emergency, you're paying for your EMS, you're paying for your, well, you're not paying for your fire, I'm sorry.
Can I just add something to that one point?
Yeah.
So, I think, like, if we standard weekend stuff, I'd be, but if you have like a large event, large events typically have EMS on-site. And it's a question is, where's the balance of what's, where, where do we draw the line of, well, you need to have EMS on-site, is the amount of people, I mean, every time we did autocross, we did any road trekkers, and there's EMS on-site we paid for.
There's EMS on-site at the Washington County Fair, but I was just thinking from like a day-to-day golf, the, um, Adventureland, you know, down in, uh, near Gansett, you know, they don't have EMS on-site every day.
Right.
So that's where I was thinking that was coming from, but you have a good point, and that would probably fall, probably fall under the event licenses. I don't know, bathroom and trash, is that regulated by other businesses? That was one thing that I wasn't really excited about, that I could learn more.
That's pretty standard.
Unannounced inspections, um, unless there's an emergency, I think there should be some kind of notice.
Yeah, I don't really like that one.
And the cash bond to protect the town. We don't require this from others, so I didn't really see why I was here. Um, I know it was just question marks that you had collected from other places, because everything should be discussed. Um, but I do think there's reasonable compromise and other things, such as like, um, if it's seasonal, a set season, uh, like we do for campgrounds, and I don't know, now I'm thinking about Adventureland, they're not open year round. They might be a good town to look at. Asking for alcohol not to be served, I think we all agree that alcohol and motorbikes don't mix very well, and, um, you know, even though we're not issuing that.
Prohibited, just about.
Yeah.
Unless you're a spectator.
Right.
And that gets interesting, like, it really depends on the situation, like in, like New Hampshire more speedway, right, Epping, all these, all these big oval tracks. Yeah, the, the, the people racing can't have alcohol, but spectators can.
Right, so we think about like, the Washington County Fair doesn't allow alcohol at it, you know, so it's like, is that something that we don't want to have? Overnight camping, I think, falls under the other regulations we discussed earlier, I don't know if that's something we necessarily need. And, um, prohibiting parking, um, on an area where it might be a tight road, and it's not somewhere you'd want to park anyway. So maybe something we look at our ordinances to see if we need to increase not parking on certain areas.
And that's where a site plan will come in. You get the license, it's a site plan, here's where the parking is, we've got enough parking for the amount of people we think we're gonna have, and it's all street parking, we're gonna go.
Yeah. Did anybody else have any thoughts on Dan's recommendations, that kind of stood out to them, uh, Jim?
Yeah, just, I, I mean, I took this as kind of a brain dump, you were doing like investigations, putting everything here, because, um, you know, I think, um, you know, to Mark's point earlier, want to make it safe for the public, want to make it enjoyable for the participants, we also want to make sure it's not onerous for the business owner, in the sense like that there's a, a minimum speed bump that you want to have with these types of regulations, but, um, I, I think the challenge is we're going from zero to sixty, right? And maybe go from zero to twenty and find a way that, um, for these types of businesses, because I, I mean, I think, if you look at what we're trying to do with the Rich Task Force and EDC, one of the things we have an opportunity to do is make Richmond the outdoor entertainment capital of Rhode Island. And having these types of facilities here, uh, is gonna be unique in the whole state. So I think it's a great opportunity. So finding a, finding a way to, uh, be collaborative on how this is developed, uh, so that it can work for what we see as a need, not all of this, but it also works for business owners that are trying to bring it to fruition.
Awesome, thank you. Any other counselors have thoughts on this one?
I mean, I, I would just say what I said before, I, I think, you know, the, the, the essence of what we need to be looking at is, is public safety and participant safety. And so a site plan that's reviewed by whatever fire department, the, the track is in, uh, police department to make sure there's adequate egress for a fire truck, rescue, in and out, turn around, all, you know, all of those things need to be reviewed. You know, and it's simple, make sure there's access, again, if you're dealing with a track, that how, how are we gonna get access to someone who happened to end up in the woods in a far corner? Is there, is there, are there fire lanes, is there access? Does the facility have a UTV that can be, can be utilized to get to someone in a remote location? So I think all of those things need, need to be looked at, obviously parking, is there adequate parking for the number of people they expect to have? Um, and I do see a difference between organizing a large event slash race day, where you're bringing people in and they're actually competing, um, you know, with each other, as opposed to open recreation time on the track, um, which is just, you know, people enjoying, enjoying it and. Um, which is just, you know, people enjoying, enjoying it and um, where things might not be as aggressive and as crowded on the track at any one time. And it tends to be less, less chance for injury and probably less crowded, so I think we do need to distinguish between those, those two different levels of. Use, you know, you've got the larger race type event and you may have it, like I said, it's a open, open day for the public to come in. And, you know, pay whatever the fee is to use the, the track on an hourly basis or however, however it's set up, so.
We can separate.
Yeah, so I mean, I think they need to be, I think they need to be separated, because you get, there's two entirely different, entirely different things, but we need, we need to understand. How many people are expected, so we can make sure that there's adequate parking.
Yeah.
I, I agree, there should be portageons, you know, um, and those types of things. I don't think, I don't think requiring that, that there's appropriate, we, the outdoor entertainment licenses require that, that there be adequate. You know, portageons. Um, so this, this wouldn't be any different on that, in that regard.
How do you, how do you want to handle this?
Um, so, so far night, we've been just making recommendations and going from there, um. But I guess we would continue with that, we'd have a recommendation for staff to take what we've discussed and turn it into a draft, right? But we, are we putting the cart before the horse by not um, getting this legislation in first? Cause what if we do all that work and it gets denied?
We can have the policy drafted and ready to go once we get the resolution, so maybe we should work on the resolution, we can get that to Megan and Elaine. Soon.
Yeah, at our next meeting.
Right. I don't know, so let's, let's work on the resolution, I guess, that's probably where we should focus.
I think, yeah, start with that and we can have a, kind of a general framework, you know, again, you don't want to get too far ahead of yourself.
Yeah.
But we can have it, you know, these are the things we want to deal with, you know, we're kind of, that's kind of what we've talked about, we don't, you know, the, the noise. They're not going to require, you know, though, you know, we've kind of expressed what we think is something we want to deal with and things we don't want to deal with, so at least we can have a framework. So if, if the legislation is passed, we can then move to the next step, going in further detail. And, and getting a, you know, an actual ordinance, you know, uh, in place and, and heard and vetted.
Anybody on the site anything they want to add? Alright.
No, well, yes, Aaron heard the comments and I don't think, I wasn't sure whether we had agreement on kind of some of the whittling down on some of those things, I think we did, so I hope Aaron you have that. Or your notes for what is crafted for us to look at, if not, uh.
The resolution or for ordinance, I think we went more specific in some of the.
Yeah.
Check marks we didn't want to see.
Yeah.
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 So should, should.
So you want more of what we do want to see?
No, I think we can go off, you know, we talked about bathrooms, general, we talked about.
Fire and safety.
Fire and safety, um, we talked about noise, the sound permit, uh, the. Reading should be more, but. As far as resolution specifics.
So, so the resolution, I think we can um, we can decide and make a motion to put it on the next town council meeting. And discuss it, then vote on it, send it to Megan and Elaine, and that's in, do we have time, you'd have to put it on tomorrow, right, for next week?
You could also just shoot your email, say, hey, Aaron, please put this on the agenda.
I can just make a motion now and we'll be done with it. Alright, I'll make a motion to um, put the draft resolution from this packet. Um, that's going to regulate motorized vehicle racing and racetracks on the May sixth. Agenda. For discussion consideration.
Second for discussion?
Alright, so we got our second for discussion, what do we have for discussion?
Um. Make that motion before we hear a little bit of comment?
Um, usually I want a council discussion to be complete and then we'll bring up public comments.
Then we can determine, that, that'll maybe help shape this.
Because the resolution will, you can, depending on how we do it next week, we can also have public comments.
Okay.
Just the resolution.
But typically, you're right, we do, before we vote, have public comments, so if council is all set with their discussion, then I will go forward with our public comment.
What about, what about the motions?
Well, we're, they're gonna hear public comment and then we'll make our vote.
While the motion's open.
Yeah, while the motion's open, um, before I go to that, I'm just gonna say, um. We are, we're gonna allow public comment on this matter, so many people came out, so many people waited for us to get through a lot of lengthy discussions we had planned for this evening. Typically with public comment and public forum, we ask you to limit your comments to three minutes, you will have one opportunity to address the council. This is at a courtesy of others who wish to speak to ensure we have equal time for all. There will be a timer that goes off when your three minutes are up, so you know when to finish. If you need more time, we welcome you to submit your comments in writing to the town clerk, to be included as a part of the record in the communications section of the agenda. All comments should be directed to the town council president and not any other person present, um, it's important to me to hear from all. So I want to ask that you just wait for recognition from the president before approaching the podium. Um, you guys are probably really sick hearing that, but thank you for dealing with it. I did see your hand first, so if you'd like to pick us off, sir, um, when you preach, approach the podium, please state your name for the record.
Thanks, Sean Warren. President of Washington County, my entire life, constituent, father, business owner, um, you know, brother. Brother to these men here, um, as brothers and we're riding together, if I could clarify, um. They were approved already, right, so this is a retroactive intention to regulate behind, uh, an approval, um, certification or regulation that was already approved, right? Like for licensure to run this track, yes?
Um, it's gonna kind of.
Sorry, Madam President.
We don't usually.
No, Madam President, I apologize, just so I can, just so I can clarify, he was already approved, the license was already approved to run the track and this is a retroactive intention to regulate this. Um, and where, where, I mean, I just heard.
Yeah, we don't, we don't usually allow back and forth.
Okay, fine, I apologize, so, so. Absolutely, so Mr. Mannick had discussed that they had been approved already to run the track, right? So I would just, and I want to say, Councilman Pal Prisciano, thank you for, thank you for regu- uh, recognizing us. Sitting here and, and our input here in terms of what you guys decide upon tonight, that's incredibly important, I believe. Um, I would just have to go ahead and say that, you know, in terms of regulating retroactively, I think you guys are, I think that would be out of um. Like legality, right, like I took me ten seconds to go back and, and just like cite a, I can cite a couple of different Supreme Court rulings, right? In terms of vested right doctrine, right, in terms of individuals already been approved for something and. The inability to go back and regulate that with over overarching restriction. Right, so I would say that even if you did put this into place, there'd be a grandfather rule for this particular track. And I could go back and, I mean, I just got, it took me thirty minutes, right? Because a Supreme Court ruling, right, AT&amp;G versus North Smithfield and Shelby versus Warwick says vested right cannot be undone by public dis- discomfort. Shifting opinion or political pressure, right, and Rhode Island general law says that retroactive restriction would actually allow this track to be considered non-conferring uses. Right, so you'd be able to implement, implement all of these restrictions onto this, you know, what is essentially, I love the idea of an outdoor capital of Rhode Island, it's genius, right? Um, but unfortunately, you know, this idea of, of, you know. Damage control, which is essentially what's happening, right, it's kind of like buying the car, car before the horse or harvy, you put it just now. Um, right, this idea that you can apply pressure to a business owner and an individual who's been a long-term resident of this place. Um, you can apply pressure to him to have to change his business when he's already vested, he was already given the right, right, to invest his time, money, energy, heart and soul into this business, right? So he's actually protected by a grandfather law, and I'll, I'll let you know, if you do go ahead with approving this legislation and you do try to implement and apply it to this particular track. Not only is it wrong and, 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 you know, potentially unethical, but it could be potentially unlawful, right? You could be affronting upon this Fifth Amendment rights, right, was that life, liberty, property, right? So what does that say to both new business owners or property owners that want to move into Richmond, right? What are you talking about? You're talking about the ability to just completely restructure because of your own lack of regulation, your own lack of guidance, right? Your inability to actually take somebody and, and regulate what they can do on their property after you've given them the right to do it. Right, so now what you're saying is you're going to enforce it perfect, you're going to enforce rules and regulations.
When the timer goes off, you gotta wrap it up.
I heard what you said, thank you, um. You know, we're not a nuisance, we're not a threat, I appreciate your intention and I, I appreciate your, uh, you know, I do agree with some of the legislation, I do think that like, you know, EMS stuff like that. Absolutely should be um, considered. But I think that, you know, and at the same time, it's kind of left up to us, we write, we sign disclosures that say that we're not gonna, you know, like. We have our own, we give, we, we, we sign up the right so that we can ride on the property, right? So we take on the liability for ourselves, so before you guys have to consider, oh, what's the liability, what's the legality, what's the EMO, fine. We take, we decide and choose on our, on our own right, out of our own sovereignty, to give up any worry and to take on the liability ourselves, thank you for hearing me.
Thank you so much. Anybody else from the public could like to speak? Alright, we're gonna go for our motion, I didn't see, do we have people online? I didn't see any hands up, go ahead, Mr. Parker.
I was trying to speak to.
Oh, I didn't see any hands up.
Please go ahead, I was waiting, I thought maybe there was somebody behind me.
Go first, go ahead.
And there's one online, thank you.
Thank you, Madam President, Eric Parker, Richmond. So um, there's one element of this, listening to the, the discussion that. An activity is neither permitted nor prohibited. I'm not certain, and I, I might be exposing myself here to a massive level of ignorance, but I'm not certain that in the United States of America. If the law is silent on an activity, it's by nature prohibited or it's prohibited by right. So for instance, I'm going to admit, I'll admit. When I retired from the Navy, I had a, I had a, interesting, I started a flight school, I started it in Richmond Airport. That is neither prohibited or granted by right to have that, so I was out of, I was somehow illegal. For what, six years while I had my flight school at Richmond and at Quonset? The, the Rhode Island Aeronautics, all it simply says is that in order to teach you have to have a license, that's it, which is actually duplicate of the, of the FAA. So Department of Transportation already covers that. To say that I could not teach simply because it was neither permitted nor prohibited, I mean, that, that somehow that works into it, not, that's, you know, we have two legal scholars here, that's called. We have negative law here in the United States, not positive law, so it's, well, we have an, a, an activity that is not prohibited. It's allowed, and if the law is silent, it's allowed, and if I'm wrong about that, I'm really open to the education, but it's not quite what I understood. When I um, started doing this research quite a while ago. So, so while I understand the risk management element, I can definitely understand the idea of risk management, that live and die by risk management. Um, that, and I mentioned before at the last, one of the last meetings, that needed to be conducted with the operator, not. By a, by just looking at the general laws around, around the country, around the region, so that was one, one, uh, really just wanted to give you that, that kind of perspective. Not, it's not positive law, it's negative law, so, thank you very much.
Alright, thank you.
One, I'd just like to say, you never reached out to me about any of this, would have been great to have some sort of heads up to have my attorney here in time. Two, I'm with him, and this is America, when something's not expressly prohibited, it is allowed. Um, I'd also like to state for the fact that this town council allowed motocross racing at the Washington County Fair in a residential zone. In violation of the own law that they said that they have, they also allow tractor pull, which is motorized racing, motorized, motorized racing, I'll make sure my kids are good, but, don't worry, I don't have to look back at you, I can talk to her. Um, so I would just like to state that we've been in business for four years, we've had the fire marshal there, you actually did there the other day. Uh, we've had maybe three times in four years, we've had to call an ambulance there, all of which the patient was attended to in a timely fashion. You asked about a UTV, I would never attend to a patient, I would never move a patient, I would never show up in a UTV and try to put them in one, that is not my job, I'm not an EMS, that is the EMS professional job, and that's what they do. I'd also like to point out the fact that that mentions insurance, which by forcing me to carry insurance, that opens me up to litigation, whereas right now, I'm free to go bankrupt if somebody decides to sue me. And that's exactly what I plan to do, is just go bankrupt, so my finances are set to, and, and it's also a sued liability sport. I'd also like to point out that the town getting involved in trying to litigate safetiness for people, I would think might open you up for litigation when somebody decides to not sue me. And they're gonna sue the regulating body of their safety and it wasn't complied with, so I would just like to state the fact that this town. Thinks that licensing people and like, cutting the foot off of a bottom blanket, adding it to the top is going to make prosperity, whereas. Me allowing my business to exist, then nobody encumbered it for four years, nobody went through planning board, and this was all done because of the landfill on my property. I would have never had this, you, you know, motocross racing is illegal, I threatened to sue, they promised me a track if I didn't do that, that's crazy, so I did it. I, I was like, alright, I'll, I'll just comply, I'll, I'll submit these forms, I'll submit them, for a year, I had some silly restriction on there, I paid. Tons of money in legal fees, I had to fight that zoning thing, you took it off, you said it was their own, you submitted application, you said you rented my property, not one person on this council has looked into the trash that I've complained about for six years. The toxic water coming off of my track, so we're talking about following law and following rules, the town has rules for thee and not for me, they've never gotten a DEM permit for their runoff water. They never got a parking plan for the uh, extra one and a half acre lot they made at Public Works, they never got permission from me to use the corner of my lot and seize about a half acre of my property. And nobody has also shown up one time to say, how's it going, to see my portage on, to see my traffic scan that I'm not required to have, to see my full egress in and out that, that ambulance can get to. To see everything that is one of your concerns, so if we're have a noise concern of two neighbors. Think about the hundreds of other people in Richmond that are thankful that their neighbors aren't riding their dirt bikes in their yard, they're, they have a place to go. They're, they don't need to, to regulate, there's no law for riding a dirt bike on your property, we checked with the police chief six years ago, we're actually granted by right, so we'll, we'll continue to exist as a private club. We'll switch our way, we'll fight human semantics every way possible and we'll just be more, we're, we're trying to be a good contributing partner in the town, we're trying to raise our tax base, we're trying to raise the value of our property. And we're doing it in a way that's safe for me, so I don't get sued, so I don't hurt people and I care about every one of their safety, this is a dangerous sport, you can't help them. But all the tracks that you referenced have all had deaths on them.
Thank you.
Chris Connor, Richmond, um, I want to take advantage of the opportunity to address everyone with any violations, but um, I think. In the, the discussion of establishing regulations, that they usually are coupled with a, a demand for some sort of safety response. And so I think if, given the, you talked a lot about the kinds of restrictions that you'd put on, but the argument that you may be missing is. What's the impact then, what are you trying to mitigate against and, and what's the concern? And I think in the discussions that we've had, um, I worry that this may be premature in the sense that. The track seems to be operating well, recognize that there's a, there is some amount of prematurely that you're trying to get ahead of, but at the same point. Uh, fixing problems before they exist, uh, creates a lot of other challenges, so I might, I might recommend that you consider. Uh, what some of those are and that develop, if, if your goal is to fix something, then you may want to develop further deeper arguments on what it is that we're trying to fix, so it's more clear to the population about why. This seems to be a problem, I don't do any motorbike racing, I don't, or racing, I don't understand it, but I haven't heard any complaints about what it is in town, so it's hard for me to, to understand. Um, and so from that perspective, I might also recommend that you postpone the resolution in the sense that it is a short time before the end of the session. Uh, if you race through this, there may be more implications than if you have a chance to build a more coherent understanding with the population about what that, the impact would look like. Because I do think it's important that for the town of Richmond, they understand that when this resolution goes up, it would be coupled with this kind of regulations that everyone in the town.
Thanks. Please just state your name for the record.
Um, Lauren Wade, and I just want some clarification on what exactly is that you're trying to do in regards to whether you're trying to pass sort of like an executive order where it's just kind of a glorified press release? If you're trying to make this into a resolution and what exactly that means, or if you're trying to um, basically put it into law? Um, and then why necessarily it would be at. Um, why you wouldn't be bringing this to a state level, because I feel like if you're going to make it a state, if you're going to make it a regulation, it should be a state regulation. Um, the way that other states have it, since that's sort of the examples that you were using. Um, I'm also aware of that, if there's the saying, um, there's a principle in law and it's, I wanted to get this saying, right? It's ignorancia, I don't know if I'm saying that right, juris nonexcuse it, which is basically ignorance of the law, um, is no excuse. And basically, you being unaware of the law doesn't make you um. Inexcusable from its consequences, but if there is no law, then it's legal and there are no consequences, so since this isn't a law. Um, or any sort of rules or regulation surrounding it, um, that doesn't make it illegal and it doesn't make it, um. It's clearly very wanted in the community by the amount of people that showed up for it today, and I know that there's a lot of people that didn't show up that really wanted to, but um. With a short notice couldn't, and I think what um, Jordan has done with this track and with this community, the property really was shitty when he bought it. Um, and what he turned it into for this community, for the children in this community, for people who come from all over. and what he's turned it into for this community, for the children in this community, for people who come from all over. Um, I've been at the trap numerous times where people show up and they're free to just kind of observe and see if it's for them. Um, he's created such a culture, and like I said, a community behind it. Um, and it's just a really great hobby for people that don't really have something, um, that they can do. And, you know, it's outdoors, which is great, because not a lot of things are outdoors anymore, especially, you know, social media, screen time, all that stuff. And it's just a great way for kids to be outside, and I don't think that that should be taken away from them.
Thank you. Were you ready for I five or to speak? Okay, go ahead. Clarity, uh, name for the record, please.
Thank you. My name's Eve Santana. Thank you all for being here, thank you for the, the community being here. Just want to express to the person who will be drafting the proposed language after the brain dump that Dan presented, that the business owner should absolutely be involved in that process for insight, because it already exists. Um, as you know, it's got, well, we've already agreed, it's wrong to, you've issued the license, it's all retroactive. The business owner should absolutely be involved with your drafting of language for insight on how it's worked in Rhode Island.
Thank you. Go ahead, sir.
Uh, the spirit of America is kind of, Mike Richmond, Mike Dillon. Spirit of America is freedom, so to suggest that if something isn't mentioned, it's a gray area, and it's both allowed and not disallowed is, uh, the exact opposite of how you should be thinking. Kind of makes me think you're not fit for your role. However, with that being said, some of the things you brought up aren't unreasonable, but I think we already do all those, so to parent everybody else, you should definitely be talking to us, you can talk to every other track, or at least every other municipality that has a track, but fail to talk to your neighbors, so.
What's up with that?
Not have enemies in this town, it's best to, you know, make some friends. If you want to get ahead of that, you should get ahead of the people that you're gonna work for.
Thank you. Oh, we have a person online?
Yes.
Thank you, we'll go to that person online. Usually I do get everyone in and then go online.
Can you hear me? Awesome. Hey, it's Kate Fish with the Washington County Fair. Um, so I just want to clarify some information, misinformation that was presented. The fair is not zoned as a residential area, so I want to clear that up. Second, the fair does not have motocross racing. It is a demonstration done by a club.
Point of order, we do not shout outs in the crowd, you're cutting into her three minutes. That's rude to her.
So again, I am the co-
Sorry, Ms. Fish, please go ahead.
It's okay. I'm the co-vice chairman, it is not a race, it is a demonstration, so I want to clarify that information. Third-
First place ribbon.
Point of order, first.
Third, um, any, everything that was presented today is actually aligned to how we operate. So I don't have, we don't have any issues with what has been presented, we have EMS, we have police, we have fire. The only issue that we have is the noise restriction, so I guess that's where we would like some clarity or guidance, or if there is a waiver of some sorts. Um, so that's kind of where we stand, but in terms of what was proposed today, that's already how we operate and is aligned with how we operate and the contracts that we have. Um, additionally, every organization that we have, you have to be a member of the club. Nothing is open to the public. So there's a lot of misinformation being spread about the fair that we don't appreciate. Um, so I want to make sure that that is taken in consideration and that the views of the fair should only be presented by the Washington County Fair officers and no one else. Um, and we don't have tractor racing, so would love to know what that looks like, but we don't have that. Um, so any questions regarding the fair should be addressed to-
Lawnmower racing.
Oh, lawnmower racing, again, but that's also just, um, by the club, not, yeah, so just any questions regarding the fair should be addressed to the committees. So that's just what I ask.
Thank you so much, Ms. Fish.
Thank you.
Um, I mean, she didn't interrupt any of you guys, but do we have anybody else online?
We didn't lie, neither.
Do we have anybody online?
Come on. We apologize.
You were not, you-
Alright, so we're done with public comment, and we're gonna move back to council and then make our vote. Um, Council Pomachano, you can go ahead.
Yeah, um, I think, um, it's interesting what, uh, Mr. Conner was saying, as far as a go-slow approach, that makes a lot of sense. The other thing is too, this, this old man's idea, it's not targeted at a particular business, but there is a business in town that obviously would be, uh, impacted by it. It might be if, if a business owner is amenable to it at some point as we're crafting this, I think it would make sense if a business owner was willing to allow a sidewalk, an open meaning sidewalk, to see firsthand what this type of facility looks like. It might give us some insight on crafting that type of stuff. That would be up to the business owner.
Yep, that, I, I agree, that sounds like it would be helpful. Um, any other thoughts? Sure, go ahead, Jeff.
Um, yeah, I'm, I'm not really a fan of regulations, so I wanted to really hear from the people that actually go there and enjoy it. Um, so, and I'm glad, glad to hear about the waiver, I didn't know about that. So, you know, people that go there are kind of taking that on to themselves, as far as, um, if they get hurt or the other stuff, so. Um, yeah, I mean, I just think that they should probably be left alone. It's kind of different business, so, um, that, that's just my, it's just.
Thank you. Anybody over here?
I, I would just, I would just say, uh, this, that I, I, I think the point was well taken, that if you're doing these things, you will be the example. Um, and this, this effort is not targeted at you because what we're trying to do is set up a framework. So when the next operator comes into town, who's not as responsible as you are and tries to do things that aren't the way they should be done, we can do something about it. You, you are probably going to be the example that we're going to follow with a lot of these things.
When I reach out to the example-
Point of order, please don't interrupt our meeting, sir.
And, and we're, so we're early in this process, and you, you've given feedback tonight, you will have an opportunity to give feedback again. This is, this is, this is just the beginning point of this whole endeavor.
Should be the end.
And it's not meant, it's meant to establish a framework, so when someone else comes in, they do it the right way too. And that's, that's my point, and that's why I think it's important that we have a framework, so we can take action. And I appreciate the fact that you have people sign waivers, that's, that's a great thing. But trust me, every day I deal with people who sign a waiver and then file a lawsuit against the place where they got hurt. Happens every day, so it's, it's-
Several of those rules change that.
That's great, so.
Yeah.
Let's stand, let's go through, I just have one other question.
Oh, sure, go ahead.
Oh, I just wanted to get some clarity too, um, perhaps from the solicitor, because there were some statements made as far as, I believe what Mr. Parker had said, um, and also as far as, um, this existing business and retroactive. Do you have any comments on that? So before we dive into this about what was said, so that we're guided correctly on, on what we do?
Yeah, that's one thing I wrote down too.
There, my understanding is the activity is a permitted use in that zone. So that, that parcel is zoned for that activity. I think it's the only one in town, right? So it's the only one in town. So the idea is, can you regulate a use in town? The answer is yes. I mean, you're doing it with other activities right now. You're gonna change ordinance maybe to regulate uses, so the answer is you can do it. You're not saying you can't do the, you can't do the activity. You're not prohibiting the activity. The answer is yes, you can regulate the activity. Question is, do you want to regulate it? And how much, if at all? That becomes the question.
Dan, you have something I want to mention?
Yeah, sure. I mean, you know, listening to everyone speak tonight, it's clear that there's a lot of things that are already happening that we've already discussed, um, which is good, and Mark made a good point. Do you have a question to our clerk? When, um, we have a permitted use and we have a business, how do we determine which types of businesses have to get a license? Is that state law, that town ordinance? What's that process? This, my understanding is just because you're permitted, doesn't mean you're licensed to operate.
So yes, so, um, it's a little bit of both. So in our ordinance revision, a lot of references were to state law. Um, we have further definitions in local ordinance that would define what license type a certain entity would get. So in our conversations about outdoor entertainment and not having some of the vague language, and so some of the, um, non-concert music festivals that have come in, it is a very gray area with licensing. However, every, every business must get a business registration, and then in some section, they call it a municipal license. So there's certain state law that dictates that you are going to, if you're serving alcohol, that you're getting a liquor license, and state law enables the town as the liquor licensing authority to get the license through the town. Now, there's other entities and businesses that require licenses that the state regulates. The state regulates several professional service licenses that we may not regulate, um, for any other reason besides the person wants to come in and get a business checking account, so they go through that business registration process. Or, um, brewery, winery specifically. That doesn't fall on the liquor licensing authority that the town council will operate. That falls under, uh, DEM through DVR. Um, mobile food, we talked about tonight. The licensing is dictated that it's required by state and may be applied locally by law. So when a zoning determination is used, um, an application is complete, the, the application requests what type of business you're going to operate, what hours, um, then the use code is checked, and then, um, we don't advise businesses specifically that say you need this license. Um, we point them to a direction of saying, your business may comply and may be required for those because, um, we're not going to provide legal advice to a business to require a certain provision. It was, you know, there's reference to, it may fit under this ordinance and such, but, um, that's part of the application, especially new license applications, and they, they specify what kind of operation they're going into. And whether we have it in our ordinance, it would be, you might want to take a look at this section or this section. Liquor license is pretty clear. They come in and they say, I want to open a liquor establishment, and that is very clear on what they can and cannot do. So some of what they can and cannot do is by state law, and some is by local regulation and limitations. Some towns limit, say, we're gonna only issue six BV licenses, and then we're gonna look at, maybe we're gonna extend it each year. That doesn't happen in the town, so it's, it's kind of a combination, depending on what it is. And some of it's not a catch-all approach, it's, it's not described that way.
Do you think with this, this is something that we could limit the number of licenses we issue? So we don't have ten facilities spread throughout? I mean, there's not really enough room for that here anyway, but being forward-thinking. Um, before that's answered, and we go into other things, I do want to say, like, I am almost aligned with, with Jeff here, where like, I don't think that we should regulate what we don't have to, but I do also see the points where we need to do this to prevent future issues for enforcement purposes. You know, if, like, we already have a model of what's going right, so let's use it to create a model of what other businesses can now do right and work with us collaboratively. Um, that's where I stand. I know it's a little wishy-washy, a little on the fence, but that's, it is what it is. Um, so go ahead and answer your question, or answer my question, please.
So with regards to limitation, I don't know that there's anything in state law that says you can limit it, because there's no enabling legislation.
That would have-
In state law, for liquor licensing there, it allows the towns to limit the licenses they grant.
Okay, Jimmy, you have something on that?
Yeah, I, I was just gonna say, I think that we should, um, best understand what we're trying to achieve and what works, and, and have a framework. Uh, and I, I'm more inclined to a simple framework that works. Uh, and I don't think we should be moving forward right now on, uh, the enabling legislation, especially if we're not gonna consider it effective until January, then we have time to, to really be thoughtful about this.
If we wanted it effective in January, it would have to be this.
Yeah, but I mean, I think even with that, I think we need to move slow.
Okay, agreed. Go ahead.
So if we don't, if we didn't move forward with the enabling legislation, what's, what would, what do you see the next step in this process being?
Uh, to, what I'd like to see is that we are able to craft what our thought is and explain very clearly to the public and anyone interested in running this, what we're trying to achieve, um, and, and get that input, because right now, uh, it's an existing activity happening, right? So whether it's next year or a year and a half, that it's decided that based on the framework we create, that it makes sense, uh, then we can go and, and see if we can get that enabling legislation to give not the state oversight, but us some, some, uh, flexibility here. And that, that, I, that's, that's my thought. Does that make sense? Does that answer your question? And if no, you can ask me again.
Could I dovetail on that for a second?
Yeah.
I, I will, just because I also think that having, um, our vision laid out will help the state understand what we want to do. Um, I agree with you that it's too vague, you know, they're gonna, if they're not friendly to this kind of activity, and we just send this big resolution, then they're gonna look at it and be like, what is going on here? And yeah, we can advocate, we can go up there, we can say what we want, but having it written and showing them that would, I think, help, but, um, somebody else over here. Mark, you want to?
Oh, I suppose, see, that was kind of my initial point about the resolution is, you know, we need to, we should have, that be, maybe it be more detailed, and that we should have an idea what we, what we want to regulate, you know? And so I, I'm not opposed to getting a better framework, um, of what we want to do before we move forward with seeking enabling legislation.
Yeah, and if I may just follow, I, I know that, um, I, I don't want to violate by addressing someone in the audience, but I, well, yeah, kind of trip over the rule, but-
We're not going back and forth with the members, but you have said, as this person said-
Yeah, let me just say this way, there are many people in the audience who are supporters of an existing business in town that have been expressed, um, although they don't want to see something overarching, but there are some, some things that they want to see put in place. Uh, but there are, there are some of the things that they saw and heard listed here today that made sense.
Yeah.
I think that's helpful. I suppose the way to say it would be, be interesting to hear from the property or the business owner what their thoughts on those simple things were, if I see someone waving.
Stop public comments, literally just to get clarification, it'll literally make all your lives easier, if you like.
Oh, sure, go ahead.
I will let all of you right now ask me what you want out of my business, and I'll see if I can admit it. You don't need to regulate, you don't need, just ask, we're neighbors. Ask me right now, what do you need? Do you want me to close at a certain time? You, you can't make dirt bikes safe, that's not possible. I, it's my biggest threat every day. I'm scared to death that something's gonna happen, and it will. What would you like to see out of my business? I'm here right now, ask me, you submitted all this. What, what can I do to make this better? What problems could I solve?
Alright, we're not gonna go back and back and forth with the audience.
I'm willing to do that for you, if you just state what your actual goals are.
Thank you.
Let me know.
And I think, Madam President, I think that's what I, I want to see, a framework, like, uh, so that we can have more of a conversation with any of these and get feedback, and, and obviously, you know, um, learn more about what's happening at these types of sites right now. I'd like to, I'd like to learn more, so that we can, perhaps, when it works for what we want to get out of this, but also works for the, the growing business of the town, I think from there. So, and that's why I don't want to rush it, I want to get, I'd like to get, I'd like to see that input too.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, that's all.
So what do you, how do you, how are you suggesting we do this? Do you want to put it on a, a regular meeting, not as in a workshop like we did tonight?
Yes, and I think, um, if it's possible, um, that we have some framework crafted for further discussion, but that doesn't necessarily prompt it going to have some kind of enabling legislation that we do, you know, try, try to figure out what we want to frame up, get input, um, from businesses that may be doing this, uh, to see, you know, yeah, I know, you're preying me on what you're talking about. But just again, to get some input, and I, I would love to have an opportunity to visit a site that does this type of thing.
Ribbon cutting next Saturday, you're invited, Jim.
Well, just, for real, that's our opening day, you're welcome, all of you, you're all invited.
Madam President, if you'd be contacted by someone, we invite you.
Weird.
So, so anyway, I think that, that'd be helpful.
Yes, it would be.
Alright, then, then I will rescind my motion and move the resolution to this.
Yeah, so I'll rescind my second.
Alright.
So now-
We have talked a lot, we have gone over a lot, um, we have a good plan forward, I think, um. I don't know, to answer the question, what you, you'd want to see, I think, um, you know, I did have a couple conversations with you over the weekend, and I, I think I went over it, what we'd want to see. We'd want to see something that works for you, that networks for us and the neighbors. And I know that you don't want it in writing, but having it in writing, I think, I think helps. Um, just so we're all clear and on the same page, um, that's really what we're going for, just a piece.
Alright, you got my address. Then we hand you an email, ask any questions you need.
Will do, because, um, like, I can't remember who said it, but it made me chuckle. They were like, I know nothing about motorbikes, I don't either. So, um, I'd love to learn more. Yeah, I think it was. Anyway, um, any further council discussion on this item, or are we going to motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Alright, we'll go for a roll call about Councilor Dinsmore.
Yes.
And it-
Yes.
Pomachano.
Yes.
Reynolds.
Yes.
Zul Cox, yes.
Thank you.